Hello. I'd like to call to order the special meeting for Tuesday, January 17, 2017, for the Board of Education to consider the 2017-18 budget. Present is Mr. Mark Patton, Mrs. Jessica Gerber, myself, Philip Dwyer, Mr. Anthony Calabrese, Mrs. Jennifer Maxon Cunelli, and Mr. John Llewellyn. Ms. Tricia Pitko is ill and had a choice. She could come into this room and infect us all, or she was wiser choice and decided to stay home, and I told her I would give her attendance credit if she watched it on TV.[48.01][48.01](Laughter). So, and we do expect the other two board members. So if I could ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As you know, we hold four meetings in January to consider the budget. At the first one, the budget is presented by the superintendent. We then hold two meetings on successive Tuesdays to review sections of the budget book. And then the final meeting on that Thursday is so that we can give final consideration, answer any final questions, and then take a vote so that we can pass it on to the first selectman's office as required by the end of January. Following that, the first selectman has a month to compare our budget with the town budget and put the two together and submit a total budget for the town, both the town side and the Board of Ed side, which gets to the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance at the beginning of March. This year's Board of Selectmen/Board of Finance review meeting will be on March 7. So those of you who want to come out and support the Board of Ed budget and watch its progression, you should look for March 7 as the date that it will be up for public review by those two bodies. They hold joint hearings. And then March 27, the Board of Selectmen votes. March 30, the Board of Finance votes and passes it on to the RTM, Representative Town Meeting. And then they give consideration to it at an April 3 through 5, one of those dates meetings. And then on May 1, the budget is voted by the RTM. There's a calendar, a review calendar that is in the budget book that have all those dates in there, so you can refer back to the beginning pages of your budget book to get those dates. They are subject to change because those bodies may change it for whatever combination of reasons. Tonight, we will review, as we normally do on the first night, kind of the high-level questions that come in the historical data, the income, and the executive summary. Frequently, a question that emanates out of the executive summary is answered by reference to another page in the book further down, and that is why it takes us less time to go through all the line items, because frequently, a question asked tonight clarifies a line item that is actually on the calendar for the following Tuesday. We will be looking at the transportation budget, because Mr. Fickie is available tonight, but he is not available for next Tuesday, so any questions on the transportation budget should be asked tonight. That doesn't mean you can't submit questions on the transportation issue, and staff can get to them, but if you want Mr. Fickie's personal presence and answer, it'll be for tonight. We'll then have public comment on any aspect of the budget following a board discussion. As in the last couple of years, we've started out with a series of each board member asks about 10 minutes' worth of questions and answers, and then we move on to the next board member so that everybody gets an equal chance to ask their questions. And then we'll go through a second round of questions, and around 9:30, quarter of 10, we'll take stock of where we are, and the board can give guidance as to whether they want to continue, or we've normally ended somewhere around 10 o'clock, but there's no requirement to do that because we are able to go till 11 if the board so desires. The last comment I'd make is that board members did submit questions in advance to help the staff do the necessary research. The document in front of you reflects those answers to questions. All but one of the questions that was asked, one of them happened to be my own, but all of the others that were submitted by Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Maxon Cunelli, and myself have been answered in this document. They may not give you the information that you were actually looking for, and so feel free to follow up tonight or in the future with any of those questions and ask for further clarification. And let's see, what else? The questions are put in the order of the book, you know, page this, page that, in the page number order. If board members did not reference a page number in asking their question, they're put at the end of the book. They may reflect information within the book, but unless you referenced a page number, those were put at the end of the document here. And part that explanation hopefully will give board members who submitted questions a chance to look for their questions and see if they've been answered or not. After tonight's meeting, early tomorrow morning, as is our custom, the questions and answers will be posted to the Board of Ed budget website for members of the public who wish to see what questions were asked. So with that, if there's no questions about process, then we will move on to the discussion of the superintendent's recommended 2017-18 budget request and start with the first section, historical data, pages 1 through 15. I did ask the superintendent if she wanted to make any kind of opening comments, and she said, "No, let's just get at it with questions." So, having said that, what is the board's pleasure for asking questions? Who, I didn't, okay, Mr. Calabrese. Mr. Calabrese.
All right, so I'm going to start with, just want to follow up on a question number 33 about enrollment, which is page 124. Starts on 124.
The answer, can I, because the agenda says we're really focused on pages 1 through 49, if you reference that there is a question that is raised there, but you think the answer is on a later page, that gets us to that later page, just so that we don't ignore the agenda completely.
Do you want me to stay within the agenda?
Well, start there so that when...
Then I will pass.
You sure that there's not...
I have no questions about historical data.
No, you sure there's no information, because the executive summary covers the entire budget. So I would think that there's some information in the executive summary that you could say, based on this dollar amount, I notice a number on a future page. Could somebody address that, something like that?
Sure, Phil. Here we go. Back to question 33, starting on page 124. The question in the book here is, and it was asked by numerous people and people from the public as well, is why does the fiscal year '18 budget book show a large increase or decrease of students at Holland Hill, McKinley, and Mill Hill? So it goes on to explain that Holland Hill was projected at 72 students last year to show up for kindergarten, but only 51 showed up. Obviously, that number was adjusted for this budget year, and it shows that there's 51 currently enrolled, and 52 is the projection for next year. And we are very good about projecting our numbers of kids that are currently in school. For as much as those neighborhoods at McKinley or Holland Hill are always labeled as transient, those kids pretty much stay in that district. So my question ends up being is, why are we off so much with our projection? Why did we think 72 kids were going to Holland Hill when our total number of kids wasn't off by much? It was just where they were being placed. So what were we looking at? Because again, this is going to relate back to number of teachers and staffing at those schools. And again, the number was fairly close. You might be talking a teacher within the district, but you know, maybe it was a teacher we thought was going to be at Holland Hill, but instead, you know, it ends up over at Mill Hill or McKinley. I'm just wondering what we're looking at and how we can do a better job of projecting where those kindergarteners are coming from.
Let me just answer kind of two things, then I'll probably ask someone from the staff to help, because we're talking about projections that are pre-me. I do feel that kindergarten always is the most difficult to project in any school system, and it's because you just don't know the move-in rate. You've got to look at the birth rate. It's all the different factors they use. With Malona McBroom, they were very thorough going into next year. Where this actual projection came from, which would be '15-'16, I would have to ask staff if anybody knows what the model was we were using in '15-'16.
And in case you're out of practice, please state your name and position.
Karen Parks, interim deputy superintendent. So that projection was produced by the company that we used to work with, MGT, and they looked at a combination of factors. Each year, they tried to get better numbers. They dealt with birth rate, which was not an accurate predictor for Fairfield. So they looked at properties available. Actually, they came to Fairfield, and we took them all around town to try to get a handle on what was happening with properties. They spoke to people in town. And you know, why it did not work for those schools, I really don't know. We generally, when the numbers are off, we reach out to the schools to see if they have an idea, and they really had no idea. So somehow, I think their projection, overall projection, wasn't bad, but where the kids ended up and which schools, just for whatever reason, was really off in those three schools last year. But in the other schools, they were pretty, yeah. So the answer is, it was MGT, and I'm not really sure.
And just to follow up on that, too, I have had discussions with some of the staff about looking at the addresses. To be able to drill down farther to understand what happened this year and where that growth was, we're just not that far along yet.
Do you mind if Mrs. Gerber follows up on that issue?
Well, also, one other thing, too, I just looked, and from the beginning of the school year until now, we've had 11 additional kindergarteners come in. So unfortunately, even the number that we start with at the beginning of the school year changes, and kindergarten is the highest. I mean, other grades have seen increases, actually. Oh, actually, second grade also had an increase of 11 students. So it makes it trickier, you know, because...
And the one thing I can say for this year, so registration, you know, is now in the central office. So we get a much better handle about what's happening in registration. And this year, last year, we saw an uptick, it seemed, in registration throughout the year, new registrations. This year, it usually, by October, it really slows down. This year, we're still registering kids pretty continuously. So I don't know why, but there seems to be a lot of movement in the community, at least in this past year and starting last year. So turnover in real estate, rentals, I'm not really sure what it is.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Calabrese, you still have the floor if you have another question? If not...
I'll wait. I'm good. Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Mr. Patton.
Staying to the historical summary on page 14 for state mandate impacts, the PPT attendance by paraprofessionals.
So I'm not sure, through the chair to the superintendent or to possibly Mr. Leonardi, what year is this reflected in the first time? Is it the upcoming year, or is it the current year?
It went into effect for this school year, but it went into effect after last year's budget was built.
Right.
So...
So we do have at least the last half a year's worth of data to say what this impacted thus far, and any idea how many paras had to go and be paid for such...
I might, I asked that question today, and I know Ann Leffert is going to check on that for us to see if we can go into the data and actually parse it out. We don't know if we've been inputting the data in that way, in the system, where we can see that it was for that particular purpose, why you had a sub.
Okay. Because many, as we know, many state mandates, we can't exactly peg exactly the dollar amount, you know, that that mandate costs, but this is one that we probably could, you know, figure out since its actual hours, right? So...
I would suggest the cost of this mandate is less in dollars and more in...
Time and substitutes.
In time lost for children by being provided services with people who actually know them. The cost is probably less in terms of dollars, because people try to organize when the appropriate time would be.
Right.
But at the end, the student is the one who's without their well-known staff to implement their program. And that's the difficulty of this mandate, is not only are their teachers not teaching them, but their paras who know their plans and programs and can support and accommodate them aren't there for them. So that's the tough part. But people are trying their best to live within, to live within the scope of this law. But there are two, it's two costs, not just financial.
Understood. So I realize that we always want to keep the para with, the same para with the students as much as possible, because that's the best continuity for the student.
We want to keep trained people who know what to do and when to do it with the student in the classroom, yes.
So to that point, if and when this happens, where a para has to go and appear and not be with their students, do we normally have other paras or teachers replace them? Does the, what's the normal procedure?
We try our best to build redundancy in by cross-training people, so that there's more than one person in the building who is trained to implement a child's plan for reasons of not just this particular mandate, but if a person is out sick or is unable to fulfill their obligation to that child.
Sure.
So we try to build those redundancies, and to the best of their ability, the principals and special ed teachers in the buildings try to operationalize these things to have the least negative impact on kids. But that is a challenge every single day, every day.
Okay.
That's all I've got. Mr. Patton? Other questions from the board? I recognize that the staff have done such a good job of getting every question answered over the Martin Luther King holiday that maybe some of you are stumped looking for things. Mr. Llewellyn.
Can I suggest that we kind of start at the beginning and move toward the end and say, does anyone have any questions on pages 1 to 5, as opposed to, does anyone have a question and bouncing all over the book? It might just be better to kind of get the flow going and keep themes together, and I think we've done that in the past.
Do you have any questions on those pages?
Sure. Which pages do you want to start with?
Well, 3A is 1 to 15.
1 through 15, there you go.
3A is 1 to 15.
Okay. Okay, I missed that, sorry. I do. Cost per student per school...
And you should reference the page number.
I am, yep. The magnet school, which is on page 8, the tuitions that we had talked about, and I notice further back here, we've got information in the revenue section on kind of the inbound, and we have the tuition further back on the outbound, on the kids we send out. So I guess on the inbound or on the outbound, which is the greater number, would be page 38. And I've noticed that there's a significant, actually, difference in tuition between, or I should say, among the various schools. So for, I think they range, page 87, as we flip back again, gives us the tuition per school.
And Mr. Llewellyn, in the document that's in front of you, you might reference question number 29 that begins to answer maybe some of...
Yes, 29, yeah.
May not answer all, but it might provide some information.
Six to six. Yep, those are the numbers. So when we look at this, are we going to, how do children or parents decide where they're going to go into some of these? And then how does this impact us if we've got, how many kids do we have in total? 235 students kind of outplace, so to speak. I mean, that's 235 less in the school system, so to speak. So we take that off the top. But like the six to six, is that an all-day?
My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, six to six, right? That's where you get this name from.
It's all day, right?
Right.
Oh, got it. Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Should have known that. But then something like the aquaculture is going to be afternoons only?
Aquaculture, is it half-day morning?
So the projections that were set were based on kind of the current enrollment, the number of students we have going in?
That's correct. We try to base it on what we know today, and the students that are actually enrolled in these schools, so those are true student numbers.
Okay. And the tuition obviously is not that $3,000 that we're accustomed to seeing for open choice and for the two new ones, which would be Fairchild Wheeler, as well as Discovery.
Well, Fairchild Wheeler is at $3,000.
Correct.
Discovery is at $3,000 as well.
Correct. But my point is, the other ones are not at those prices, at those levels.
That's correct. And actually, Center for the Arts is less, VoAg is more, and so is six to six magnet.
All right. Okay.
Did you ask how the students are recruited in the decision-making process?
I am. I'm trying to understand how that occurs. And then I've noticed, I'm trying to think here, if we look, we're all over the place. There's another section. Where is it? Then we've also got under tuition back on page 39, which is then going to reference page, this is all over, let's see here. The other tuition is just going to be the increase. It says we've got the magnet schools, and then we have kind of the outplace. That's all in that same number.
Right. What you see reflected on that page is the $219,000, that is new magnet, and that's where we've probably had the most discussion, that we have not been, you know, billed for previously. We have $165,330 in special education increase in outplace tuition.
160...
165,330 helps make up that 437,000 number.
Okay. And that number's not a big increase versus the other. Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Do you want one of the staff members to come up and talk about the recruitment process or not?
Please.
You do.
Yeah, just understand, do we manage that number or do we not? Can we, do we not want to? Go ahead.
On a recent policy that was given to all board members, that was the student confidentiality, there was in that explicitly, we are required by statute to open our doors for that recruitment process and provide them full access to our students for that, exactly for that recruitment.
That's what they're referring to.
Yeah. And this is the recruitment there.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. And then the opposite side of that, I notice there's a question answered in here about the tuition that we receive, and that we've not indicated, or we've not projected an increase in the tuition for our increase in open choice.
That is correct, and we handle that in the same way we handle our current magnet students. Our magnet number going out could go up or down. Our open choice could go up or down, and we don't know if we will be able to fill all 18 of those seats, so we don't want to count on that revenue. It's about 56,000, I think, on that, right? 54.
54.
And if I can, a similar question was asked about the Walter Fitzgerald campus, about not budgeting for the increased students, and is essentially the rationale the same?
Yes, it is.
And in the past, have we ever offered open-choice student seats that have not been filled? In other words, I thought there was a waitlist for kind of open choice to be inbound.
Yeah. Have we ever offered an open-choice seat to somebody, and the family decided, they changed their mind and decided not to come?
Or, yeah, not the families, could it not be filled by somebody? If we were to open up 10 of them, have we ever had folks not come in?
Mike Cummings, Director of Elementary Education, to my knowledge, my limited historical knowledge on this two years, but looking at the data for the past 10 years, there's no indication that, and in conversations with CES, that any seats offered by Fairfield are not claimed.
Okay.
So we have a high demand.
That's what I figured. Okay. Thank you very much. So we've got at least an opportunity there, which is good. Okay. Thank you.
Correct. Anything else, Mr. Llewellyn?
I'll, we can go, and we'll come back. Thank you.
Other questions from board members? I'll give you a moment and bring the two board members up to date. We're looking for questions related to pages 1 through 49, knowing full well that the answer to that may lie in pages that are further back. But if you start with asking a question on either historical data, income, or the executive summary, which essentially covers the entire budget, we'll go through a couple of rounds of questions of board members. And a lot of the questions were answered that were submitted. They're ordered in the number of the page number, not in the order of who asked the question. And so we are now in the midst of asking questions from random board members. And so, Mr. Patton, and then, Mr. Patton.
I do have many questions, but to Mr. Llewellyn's point, could we, as we're trying to go through this at least today, kind of stick to the sections so we don't end up going all over the place?
Do you have questions related to one, page 1 through 15?
Right. I mean, Mr. Llewellyn's question kind of pushed back to the, you know, page 38 of the latter section. I know they're related, but if we can kind of keep to, like you said, going in order, it would help...
That's the only way to do it. You have to keep things...
Sometimes it's hard for this board to restrict themselves to that kind of order, but do you have a question on pages 1 through 15?
I'm done with 1 through 15, so I wanted to know, you know, when we're done with that, I do have income questions.
Okay. Any other question on pages 1 through 15? That doesn't mean that this is the forever-hold-your-piece, but nonetheless, let's try and move 1 through 15 and then move on to the next section.
I just wanted to speak very briefly to that, because I'm still finding all of my questions and trying to read the answers, so I apologize if I end up either emailing or next week going back to them, but I'm still sorting that out, so...
But you don't have a question on pages 1 through 15?
Correct.
Anybody else have a question related to pages 1 through 15? 1 through 15 going, 1 through 15, correct? Mrs. Lou McCormick.
Is it okay if I just go kind of page by page, because that's kind of, I'm not sure what you covered already?
From 1 to 15?
Yeah, from 1 to 15.
Sure. And then we'll move on to the next section.
Yeah. Okay. So on page 3, I ask for this every year, and the reason is because it always looks so bad when we show up at the bottom of Fairfield. Fairfield's always on the low end when you look at the border, or the coast. But really, I think as you move away from Manhattan, typically, the wealth factor also commensurately declines. So they have that DRG grouping, the DRG A and B, and I generally find it useful just to understand how we have done versus our DRG, because that's kind of peer from a wealth and community type of measurement, as opposed to some of the much wealthier communities that clearly can spend a lot more. It's kind of looking at Suffolk or Nassau County versus each other. So that, and then the other thing that I'd like to see is, I'm just wondering...
You'd like to see this same similar graph for DRGB.
DRGB, correct. Exactly. I ask for that every year, so I'm just explaining to her why I ask it, because she hasn't heard me say it the other three years.
Correct.
She probably skipped that part. Who wouldn't? Okay. So that, I think, is helpful. And then we're going to come to another page related to that, which would, and I'm not going to get to that, I'll go page by page. Okay. So that goes on page 3. On page 4, the professional development and implementing the elementary mathematics. I'm just curious, where within the budget, how much do we spend on that? How much was allocated within the professional development? You don't have to give me the number right now, but I'm going to ask for a whole bunch of items, and maybe it's answered in this packet already, I don't know. But it would be nice to know how much we've spent and how much we're planning to spend for the full rollout and professional training for the elementary mathematics.
If I can interrupt... If I can interrupt you for a moment, I believe, Mrs. Maxine Cunnelli, that you asked that or a similar question?
It could be in here.
Have you found it in here yet, that you might reference?
It was only referenced to the Wilson reading. I was asking about some of the math. I haven't found the other one about.
It's in the budget, actually.
But it's in, yeah. That's what I don't know, is the page number. It's not in the budget.
There is a list of professional development that we're providing on page one forty-six, which shows elementary math K to five, that shows the professional development as well as resource materials. So, does that give you the information that you're asking?
Um, I don't know.
You would ask for the full rollout. This is just the upcoming year.
Yeah. I was kind of looking for, and also the, the training, the actual training, not the materials. So, you know, the professional development, the actual professional development. Is that broken out here?
Not for last year.
Purchase of texts and supplemental materials. It kind of lumps it all together.
Page one forty-six.
I'm looking at it. There's two math things. PK three twelve, is that what we're looking at? The one oh five, three forty-seven, curriculum development, professional. So is this, let me see, the eight, three eight one. Is that, is that for the, that's how much we are spending in the forecast? But what is the full? Like, what do we, have we spent most of the professional development, or is that it? We're only spending 8,000 in total?
Do you want Mr. Cummings to answer?
Mr. Cummings, do you wish to come forward and talk about the pre-K five professional development and curriculum development, and perhaps reference what has been done this year and how that drives the budget for next year?
Actually, can I just expand on that for one sec? So, I think it would be really helpful to understand, last year, I think we had $750,000 in the budget for elementary math. How much of that 750 was spent? How much was spent on books? How much was spent on PD? Which, how many folks have been through the PD? And where is each of the elementary schools in the rollout? Anecdotally, we've heard that, you know, some schools are using and others, it's not as apparent that it's being used. So, it would be good to understand, you know, what's been spent, and then, is this kind of the end of it? Or is there more to come in next year's budget as well?
So let me try to break this out into the current year and then talk about what's budgeted. I'd have to get you the exact figures in terms of, I don't have that in front of me right now, of what was budgeted and what has been, was spent on the textbooks and what's been spent so far in the professional development. I will say that in the current year, we have supplied, we've, every classroom teacher, every, and every MST in the, in the eleven buildings has received the Bridges materials. We are continuing ongoing professional development. We did get some PD built into the Bridges purchase, which was used with our, some of our staff, but primarily, the MST's in each of the buildings, along with, under the direction of Mr. Wakeman, have been creating ongoing professional development to support the implementation of the math resources. That material, they meet once a month. That material is distributed to the teachers at Tuesday afternoon meetings, at grade level meetings. It's just a continual process. We have identified, we continue to identify during the course of that work, that there is a continuing need to align the new resources to the existing curriculum, to align to the resources we had in place. And so what you'll see in the seventeen, eighteen budget to some degree, particularly under curriculum, is ongoing efforts to make that alignment more clear for our classroom teachers. We do have an understanding and an expectation with all of our buildings, that this is an equitable distribution, that there's an equitable expectation of what will be done in each of the classrooms. Having said that, I know that some buildings are working a little bit more slowly than we'd like, but we see that that's an issue more of ability to respond to the needs than anything else. And so our job is to, like with any set of, I think broadly about this, any set of eleven learners, we've got to supply more resources more times to those buildings. So, if I answered your question about sixteen, I mean, I have to get you the detail on sixteen, seventeen.
And, you know, how many teachers have actually been through formal training rather than, you know, materials distributed on a Tuesday evening?
Every teacher has been.
Through, through formal with the Bridges folks?
They're, in terms of, when, I define formal training here. What I'm defining it as, that there's time set aside, whether in the school day or after the school day, with one of the MST's in their building, with the MST in their building, to formally go through the units as they come, as they're being introduced, to talk about what the learning expectations are within those, excuse me, in the resources, how they align to our current curriculum, what resources, particularly right now in the Bridges number corners, should be used to support the curriculum and the expectations within the curriculum standards. So that is happening formally in every building with every teacher.
Okay. So if it's happening in that fashion, does that hit our budget in terms of dollars? Or is that teacher time and MST time that is taken kind of as a one F to E? So we shouldn't see any numbers on the, on the chart that Ms. Gerber referenced on one forty-three or wherever it was?
You will see in the, in the current budget, in the proposed budget, there is about eight, I think eighty-three hundred dollars or so in, in PD. And one of the questions that you asked of us answers that, is, I think, about, I'm going to try to do this off the top of my head, about $2,446 in monies on.
Working on some professional development for the teachers?
Oh, that's right. Thank you. So that money is for, to work with staff this summer, our MST's, to develop these ongoing PD modules that will roll out during the school year once the teachers return in September. There's also some money, about $5,600, I believe, that is being used to train the MST's and Mr. Wakeman. We see a need to increase our staff's proficiency in instruction of fractions. So we're going to spend some money in training this summer with that group to increase that ability. So that's a specific area that we see as a need, that it's instruction of fractions.
And wasn't there a home aspect to this as well?
Mr. Llewellyn, I wonder if we could stay focused on the seventeen, eighteen budget, and then you could follow up and say, could you place that answer in the context of last year or what you think is going to be ongoing?
Sure.
Because we should focus on the seventeen, eighteen budget in this session as part of the agenda.
Can I finish with my questioning?
So, do you, this is your time that you relinquish to Mr. Llewellyn at the moment. Do you have any questions on the seventeen, eighteen math pre-K budget that you want to finalize?
Go ahead.
Okay. Back, back to Mrs. Lou McCormick.
Okay. So, what I wanted to understand was, as Mr. Llewellyn had indicated, there's a 750 total number we had approved for this year's spending, right, for the new curriculum. This looks like, in total, it's like a hundred and whatever, thirty, a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Where is the other, whatever, 600,000?
Well, those texts, those text materials were purchased. As we talked about last year, I, and again, this is a figure off the top of my head, I'd have to look, but I believe there's about $80,000 in our proposed budget for K-two materials, because in, in this series, as in many elementary math resource series, the K-two materials are usable. They get used up. They can, you know, the kids take them.
Consumable.
Thank you. So, that, those are the things that we're working on. And so, there's going to be ongoing budget costs for those, to replace those materials. Now, having said that, one of the things that we want to look at, and we just can't make that commitment at this point, because the materials are new, is we really want to see what is the, what are the materials that, that teachers and students find to be of the highest quality and of use. And our hope is that we can eventually reduce those purchases and supplement in-house through our copy services.
Just so I understand, so we had the 750 that was approved last year?
Mrs. Lou McCormick, kind of the same comment that, this is, today's, tonight's meeting is to talk about seventeen, eighteen budget. I think if.
But that's what I'm trying to understand. I want to, I want to understand what this one oh five is.
So stay focused on.
I am. This is the number. And, but it has to do with the 750, because I want to know if the 750 wasn't fully spent and it's rolling into this year, or if this is an ongoing one oh five, because you're saying workbooks are used and then need to be replenished every year?
The K-two materials are consumable, and those will have to be used every year.
Okay. So the one oh five?
That money will have to be budgeted every year.
So the one oh five is a repeating item basically every year?
A portion of it or the entire amount?
A portion of it.
Yeah, a portion of it.
A, a portion of it?
Yes.
Okay. So what, what portion of it is repeating versus fixed? And then, I guess the question is, is what was the fixed amount if we bottled the textbooks upfront last year?
That I have to research, because offhand, I don't remember what the final tally was on the elementary textbooks, on the elementary Bridges materials.
Uh-huh.
But the math, it's, it's, I'm just sorry, I'm looking up.
I might, I might just add too, on page ninety-four, where the, some of that detail is, we did have budgeted for sixteen, seventeen, that 559,000. Our estimated expenditure is 482, so that you can see where those dollars have gone. And then, what Mr. Cummings is referencing on that one oh five is with elementary math series, it's more, you don't generally have textbooks, hard books. They are consumables that you have to buy every year. They're either built into your contract and you pay more upfront, or you're purchasing them on an annual basis.
And so is it the way we worked? We paid more upfront? Is that why it was so large, the 750, and now it's only one oh five?
Well, when you buy the, the one oh five is the consumable materials for K-two. It also was, Mr. Wakeman, looking at our enrollment, made the decision to purchase an additional kit per grade. We don't know, you know, we have X number of sections now in grade three. Are we going to have an additional section next year? So we've, we've purchased a couple, I believe, one extra kit per grade level.
Okay.
That's about, that would add up to the hundred and five. The remaining amount, the big difference is that the three, five materials made up much of the, the original purchase last year, or this year.
And that doesn't have to be replaced?
That does not.
That's, that's fixed?
That's right.
Okay. And then, for the training, is the training rollout, is that hap, is that done as of this year now? The $8,000 will complete it? And I guess, what was the total amount? Or is this part of a, you know, $50,000 professional development plan that we're rolling out over three years or five years? Or what is the plan for professional, like, when will the teachers be trained?
Well, and I apologize if this comes off in any other way than respectful, but they'll never be done. Will never be done with this work, because the, one, we have an ongoing need, because we have a continual turnover of staff. So we're always going to be needing to train new staff. But the other part of our mission is that we find things that we're not doing as well as we should, and we have to, like the fractions example. We have to go back in and retrain, regroup ourselves around that, and try to fix where we were seeing as holes. So that work, in a sense, never stops, because it's about continual improvement. Now, having said that, one of the things we need to be mindful of always is all the training that's going on for our teachers, and we have to prioritize. So there's a certain level of, you know, how much can we do in the time we have, and being mindful too of the dollars. But that work never stops.
I was just trying to understand how much of this was for the Bridges, not for your everyday updating and kind of keeping everyone current? Like, when did the Bridges training rollout complete?
The, the, the work that would be most specifically related to Bridges, in a sense, in the math, if you're looking at page one forty-six, is really the, the curricular-type work. There's about $20,379 for curriculum. We're going to be bringing staff in this, this summer to work on the units. As teachers have implemented the Bridges resources, we're finding places where the Bridges resources should be used more extensively than our resources, where our resources might be better than the Bridges resources. So we're trying to do, essentially, this summer, to use the metaphor, we're really trying to thread together the two sets of resources and make decisions about what the best ones are. I think that's a substantial piece of work that we're going to do after this first year of using the Bridges. But I would say, and I would think that in the coming years, that curriculum work would reduce, but it will never go away, because you're always trying to.
I understand.
Fix those implementation guys.
I was just saying, for the rollout, to get an understanding of what we budgeted for and what we are actually spending on the complete rollout and the timeframe, that would be good to know. That's, that's pretty much all I'm asking for, if that's possible at some point.
So, again, I just want to make sure that we want to get an accurate accounting of what our current expenses are in math, K-five math.
Yes. And if you say we're adding extra kits to different classrooms, have we used all the kits we already have? Or do we just want to add more?
No, we've, we've used all the kits we have. They're all out there. We bought, we bought to the, in fact, this year, when we added some grade sections at the beginning of the year, we had to buy additional kits to make sure that they were all equally supplied.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You have extra questions, Mrs. Lou McCormick?
Is it okay if I keep going?
Sure. Yeah.
If anybody wants to jump in.
Let me finish and say, anybody have any questions on one to fifteen? Do you have extra questions related to one to fifteen? Floor is still yours.
Okay. I'm going to just move down the page then. So, in the last check mark on page four, it says continued focus on interventions for grade PK through twelve in math and reading. And I guess my question is, as we allocate for the budget, are these interventions focused on particular subgroups of students? Or is this aimed at interventions for all levels of students? And how is that quantified within the budget? I didn't just mean for a special ed, I meant across the board, just to be clear. So.
The interventions we're talking about are kids who are struggling to meet, or for kids who are struggling to meet the standards. So we're looking at not only children with disabilities, but any child who's not, who is struggling to meet the standards that are set. And so we look at pre-K, all the way through, and depending on the nature of their need, we are developing, identifying, and providing resources to implement scientifically research-based interventions for those kids.
And so I guess this specific, and how do we quantify how much we've allocated towards these interventions?
Well, we have, I can give you, if you want to go kind of intervention by intervention, the bulk of the money for the intervention work is continuing to move forward. It's approximately $80,000 going toward the Wilson reading, which is, which we've talked about in terms of this level-one certification in Wilson. That's the bulk of those dollars. And then we have small seed money, I would call it, to look at a K-two intervention for kids who come to school without the requisite phonemic and phonological awareness skills. And so we're looking at identifying the, the proper interventions for that. We're identifying and using some Bridges kits for work with our special education teachers. There are some intervention kits for mathematics, so we'll be looking at those kits and the companion PD to go along with that. And then, we're also looking at grades six through twelve, and expanding, part of the Wilson is going to teachers in grade six through twelve, but also expanding those resources to look at young adult struggling readers, and the kinds of interventions they will need to move that forward as well.
And so would you say the aggregate of all these interventions would be within the budget?
The aggregate of all of the interventions, including professional development and materials, would probably be somewhere in the neighborhood of 200 to 220,000 dollars?
And Mrs. Lou McCormick, question number forty-two, which I think came in from Mrs. Maxine Cunnelli, sends you to page forty-three, number four oh four, and references the Wilson reading.
Oh, okay.
It's a short answer, but.
Well, that's only part of it, though. That was eighty K of it. But in total, it's like 200 to 220.
When you look at staffing?
When you look at everything.
Plus professional development, plus the resources to implement the intervention? Yes.
And I guess my question is larger. Within our budget, do we have an equivalent for not just struggling learners, but for interventions for kids who may need to, you know, be challenged? Like, what about the challenge side of things? Like interventions where they need to be pulled out? Do we have that offset? I guess you're not probably the person to answer that. So I'll let you, I'll ask, I'll turn it back to whoever is appropriate.
I always try to be appropriate. The budgeted amount, and I apologize, I just was thumbing through the book, I didn't have time to get it between here and there, but is the money that we have budgeted and gifted, instructional services for gifted, both in the staffing for the elementary IITs or the gifted teachers, as well as the dollars we put into their budget? So they have, they have an expenditure account every year as well?
Okay. But that's more project-based. It's not necessarily curricula-related. So, for example, it's not related to actual in-classroom activities?
Okay.
It's kind of an extra thing?
So, thank you. So the other thing we do is, we look to, for example, I'll give you, we purchase classroom libraries for our elementary classrooms. We look for a wide variety of texts, not just on topic and interest, but also reading levels. And we make sure that in all the grades, all reading levels will be challenged. So you're going to find books for struggling readers, but you're also going to find books for students who are reading well above grade level.
Good. And how about in math?
Math, we look for that materials. We look at, well, quite honestly, the, the Bridges materials offer some of those resources themselves. And, but we continually build for those, those. for those, those challenges. I mean, there's existing resources that the teachers have compiled to meet the needs of students. Part of our, also, our ongoing professional development in both reading and math, is to train teachers to recognize, to recognize when students need to be challenged, and to develop those materials right there, you know, overnight, that type of thing. So it's not always something that you pull off the shelf, because you also have to be mindful of the students.
And it's being done in class? Is it being done in the classroom? Or is it being sent home for parents to do?
Well, I don't know. I mean, to my mind, it should be being done in the classroom.
It should be done in the classroom. Because I know that, I'll go back to Singapore math, because I understand it well. So with that series, they had challenge textbooks or workbooks, as well as kind of mainstream?
Mm-hmm.
And so I'm, I guess with bridges, does it have the equivalent? And are we trained on those resources? And do we actually implement them in the classroom?
I'll turn to Mr. Wakeman.
And is that part of that seven fifty or whatever? Is that what we have being done?
Walter Wakeman, pre-K five math and science curriculum leader. There are resources in the bridges, and actually, they're cited in the daily lessons that teachers have a resource to. They have extensions and challenge for our students. And some of the materials and resources that are part of the summer work that we do is identify some of these resources that teachers can avail themselves to, to support students. And challenging students, we're looking at challenging all the students, regardless of where their abilities are and understandings are in the classroom. So there, and the math-science teachers are actually some of the most beneficial resources to the teachers in helping them to navigate some of these. Being the quantity of resources that teachers receive this year in navigating them all, those people have been really key in helping them to identify resources.
So it is part of the curriculum?
Right.
Right, that we've purchased in bridges, and it's being implemented? So it's part of our budget already? It's part of whatever?
Again, the, the gift that we received last year with the bridges resources provided teachers with a wealth of resources at their fingertips to differentiate for all students.
And we're doing that in the classroom?
Right.
Across the board.
Again, this is a learning year with a new resource, but yes, that's what we're working towards.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
I wonder if I can interrupt, so that we can make sure every board member hasn't, hasn't a chance to ask questions?
Sure.
We'll come back to you, but let me see if there are any other board members have questions, one through fifteen. Ms. Carnell.
I guess on page seven? And I believe that, you know, we, we get these stats every year. What I was wondering, if we can have a better breakdown of these stats in terms, and through the chair, to whomever is able, who has the statter, I'd like an understanding in more detail about how many students take the AP classes but do not take the test? Because I think that's very different stats. A breakdown on the threes, the fours, and the fives, minus just, instead of just the three plus? And are there certain courses where our district does better in AP than others?
We certainly can get that data. We get that on an annual basis, so that's not difficult for us to get and present to the board.
Great, thank you.
Anything else, anything else?
We never got it.
Well, anything?
Got it from Dr. Tracy.
Anything else that you wish to get? Because it may be that Dr. Jones will find that, as Mrs. Gerber says, that the answer has already been put together, and just, it's a reminder. We'll see.
My feeling is that if we got it, she'll find it for me.
Yes.
But not to the detail I've been consistently requesting. Yeah, I do have another question.
Okay, thank you, next.
And
In one second, did you get the question clearly that you
Yeah, did.
Okay, good, thank you.
Excuse me. And this may be buried in some of these answers, so forgive me. We're just going one to fifteen?
One through fifteen at the moment.
Okay, mine starts at fifteen.
Anybody else on pages one through fifteen? Back to you, do you have any other questions on pages one through fifteen, Mrs. Lou McCormick?
I can just keep going.
Well, and also out of respect, so all the board members might have questions on other pages.
Absolutely.
I might ask you to submit some of the questions if, so that
Sure, whenever you want. So with leadership capacity
Page.
On page five. In professional development, I guess my question is, is are we sufficiently allocating the professional development monies to bring people from the outside, like third-party experts, in to do professional development? I can't even remember, a teacher had brought it up to me once, that they used to do lots of external professional development, and a lot of it has just become internal teaching each other, which is wonderful, because there's a lot of wealth of knowledge within the district. But it also is interesting to get someone with completely a different perspective from elsewhere. So I'm wondering if that is a focus of your professional development allocations within this budget?
Yeah, I might ask staff to address that.
So what percentage of the total professional development dollars are spent on outside resources versus inside resources? And if you don't want to hazard a guess, you can always give us the number after the meeting.
Meg Boyce, Director of Secondary, I'd have to get back to you on a percentage, but I can give you a couple examples. In our world language program, for example, Eileen Frankel, our coordinator, has done an excellent job of bringing in nationally-known presenters to work with all of our world language teachers. She does that every election day, and other times during the year, we've brought in several times, a consultant to work with our two Chinese teachers, just to work with those two teachers, to help them understand how to implement the curriculum and really work with the students in our high schools. So that's one example of something that we do. I have to tell you, though, I'm, I'm a great believer, when it comes to professional development, professional development, that is onsite. I think we have to be a little bit careful, although it's wonderful to bring in someone who's well-known and have that person speak to everyone. But then I always ask the question, so what are we gonna do after that? So it's really important to have professional development planned, so that there's follow-through and embedded practice, you know, even after that happens. We've done a good job of that on world language, but that's one of the reasons why we do a great deal of work for ourselves. It's not that we don't value big names, but that big name comes one day, and then that person's gone. And then what happens?
Yeah, I appreciate that. You know, I, I do, I think it's wonderful that you bring in the world language. And I think also, with the areas of science, technology, these areas move so quickly, that it's nice to think that we have all the expertise in-house. But I think the world moves so quickly that it behooves, I think, our instructional staff, as well as students, to kind of get that very updated perspective from other areas. So I don't know if we ever break that out, but it would be wonderful if we would think about, kind of consciously, as opposed to unconsciously, kind of allocating money towards bringing staff in, in, in certain disciplines. Even when we bring in like a new math roll-in, whenever we're rolling out a new curriculum, do we consciously allocate to bring in an external person to train? I know, like, some of our neighbors had brought in some people from Asia to come train them when they came in. We actually participated once also. And I, people found it very valuable when you get somebody who's very well-renowned. So thank you.
Other questions, one to fifteen?
So that was the number. So I was looking for the percentage that we bring in, and what disciplines. So that was that question, right? In terms of, so this is still page five, continued focus on sharing strategies and best practices across the school district, is that really a budget item? Or not, not so much, right? That's kind of part of our part and parcel as we manage? There's no real cost item?
Yeah, and staff may wanna chime in, but we do instructional rounds, which can have a budgetary implication, if you're having to get subs, you know, in order to do the instructional rounds. So it really just depends on what the focus is.
Okay.
If I can, I think the information on pages four, five, and six, correct me if I'm wrong, but for the most part, that is using existing resources.
Right, that's correct.
There's no new money involved in, in this implementation of these, this portion of the district improvement plan. It's using existing resources that's already budgeted. Is, is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, except for math resources. I mean, the math rollout has, we just talked about that. But anyways, yeah, so I'm, I'm done with that section. On page seven, if I could flip you to the AP results, I'm wondering if you could rechart this with showing the threes, fours, and fives?
I think that's Ms. Carnell's question.
Yes, for that, right?
Yes.
Okay. That's easy, is that easy enough? Okay, I just wanna make sure.
I, I think we'll get the information. We may not change the chart, but we'll get the information that was requested.
Okay.
All right, let me see if there's anything else.
All right, okay, so maybe this is, I'm sure somebody's covered this in this packet, but on page ten, the ECS reduction. So we are anticipating a total reduction of seventy percent. So in, in a dollar amount, how much is that? And are we expecting that to be further reduced in, in the coming years? Like, what is kind of the projection on that whole thing? Are we expecting to have to bring this whole thing in-house eventually?
Yeah, I would refer you to page twenty-one, where it shows the revenue coming in. And what you'll see is what's projected this year. When we started the year, was that one point six million. Now, what is shown in the budget book was that one point six million, because at the time we were creating this budget book, we weren't one hundred percent sure that we were going to also have that five hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight reduction. That does flow through the town side, so it's just important to note that. But that is what that is on the top of page twenty-one, where it says education cost-sharing, top line.
Right.
And if I can interject, in terms of projections, when I was up at the Department of Education, which was like a day or two after the five hundred and seventy thousand dollar cut was announced by the governor, and I asked the staff up there, so were you aware of the cut that the governor was going to make? The answer was no. And so I think it's very difficult for any Board of Education or government official to be able to project what the governor may or may not be planning on doing in the upcoming budget. The only thing that I think we can do is to budget for what we know we have after the second cut, and not budget lower than that, as if we're signaling, go ahead and cut us whatever you want. But it is, it's almost impossible to project on either educational cost-sharing or ECS grant for next year from the state.
Right.
It'll be very difficult.
And I think it would be, I think, helpful and also interesting to understand how many dollars of additional funds we have to absorb in our budget directly that used to be supplemented by the state? Because I'm sure that kind of trickles through various new policies and new, like, if there was one aggregate, so we can see how much the state is impacting our budget with the increases, I guess, unfunded mandates that they're imposing on us. And I would say that that starts kind of with the excess cost, right? Where they're supposed to be funding us a hundred percent over the four and a half times for the, that excess cost-sharing with the, with the state. So I know they only fund, they used to only fund seventy percent of that, right?
I might, I might actually reference you on, on the packet that you got tonight with the questions. We did have two questions, question four and question six, which might be helpful. It does give, Andrea did, I think, a good job using a pie as her thought process, and so the way that it's written there helps people understand how that money is parsed out. Because if you think of it like a pie with slices, and if more school divisions in Connecticut are wanting to act, to access that one pot of money, that pie, then the slices get smaller, which means less funding.
Oh, no, I understand that we get less funding. I think the question is, is how much is it impacting our budget, where there's these kind of unfunded mandates that the state keeps coming back with? So in its aggregate, how much is that within our budget?
Yeah, and I would reference you to pages twenty-one and twenty-two, which is a listing of the government grants that we get. And again, with the caveat that it's almost impossible to project what state funding will be available when they pass their budget in June. But this shows the actual for last year, the projected for this year, and what we're assuming is budgeted for next year.
Does it have everything? Like, does it have the dyslexia training? Does it have, like, I, I just kinda wanna see what the new state polit, like, in aggregate, what the impact is? Because I have a feeling that that's a pretty significant number within our budget, and it'd be interesting to see how that's grown over time. And if, you know, and let's say that they continue, like, at that rate, it's just kind of good to understand how much of an impact it's had on this budget. So if we see a three percent rise, we can understand, and you can rationalize and say it's because the state has been pushing back more into our budget, and this is how much in total. In fact, it's been more like ten million dollars, or some, some large number, which my guess is, is pretty large, once you look at the excess cost that's not being funded by them, which they should be funding.
Yeah, in total, our budget is funded by outside government, outside of the town of Fairfield, by about six or seven percent. The balance comes from local tax dollars. And so the, the total of government funds is that, and so it's a reduction of that percentage, whether it's from six to five, or six to four.
Four to five, now, actually.
It's four to five now, as a result of last year's cut. So it's a fairly, quotes, it's, it's a significant dollar amount, but it is a small percentage of our total budget that we depend on, from either the federal or the state government.
No, I understand. I'd like to see what those items are. So what the items are, and what the aggregate is.
And again, those are listed on pages twenty-one and twenty-two.
Well, those are the, only the incomes, plus they have unfunded mandates that we have to do, which isn't an income, it's, it's the mandate that we have to fund, right? Like the dyslexia training, and there's like, I think, a few different things that are out there. I don't know all of them, so I'm hoping that you can just kind of put them together in a list.
I will give it my best effort.
Awesome.
Based off everything that we know that's in here.
Perfect.
All right. Can I clarify one thing? Sorry. The, the
Mr. Wellen.
First number on page twenty-one, under the excess, the, sorry, the ECS, the one point six, that's, reflects the most recent cut, correct?
It does not.
It's not?
That twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, by the time this budget comes out and approved by the board
It'll be six hundred less.
Yes, it will be five hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight less.
That's what I thought you said, but then I wasn't sure I heard that, so, okay.
And that'll be reflected in the town side of the budget.
Correct, but I just wanna make sure. Yep, thanks.
Other questions on pages seventeen to twenty-six, on this side of the room? If there are any questions on pages seventeen to twenty-six?
Seventeen to twenty-six.
Mrs. Gerber.
Through the chair, I guess it would be to Mr. Cullen, if he's here? This would be on page twenty-two. I just had a question about the custodial fees and the building rentals. I was just curious as to why they decreased. Not a tremendous amount, but I just was curious as to why they decreased.
For the record, Tom Cullen, Director of Operations, you said on page twenty-six?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. It's this top group of numbers, the second from the bottom, which was a hundred and thirty-two for fifteen, sixteen, and a hundred and twenty thousand projected for this year, and the same amount budgeted for next year. I think that's the line that you're talking
Yes, those two, and then the building rentals as well, are slightly
Yeah, below that.
Yes.
I believe these are based on the monies we take in from the reservation groups. So it's a projection, looking at past year, moving forward for the new year. So our reservation clerk coordinator looks at the history and provides what she estimates she thinks we'll get for the following year, the coming year. So I probably have to get just some more detail on where we think the custodials
Right, yeah, I mean, I guess the thing is, you know, we, we know how busy all the schools are, you know, after regular school hours with, with buildings being used. And so just looking at the number declining slightly, I would've thought it might even have gone up a little, or at least stayed the same. So I was just curious if there was some reason why it had slightly declined, or not
No, we have a good idea of what groups are coming back, and she estimates some of the ones that, you know, will let us know that they're leaving, or this is their last year. So it's really just a projection and an estimate.
Can I follow up on that question?
Yeah, go ahead.
If I recall, a year or two ago, it was agreed that kind of we're, we'll absorb some cost, and, and then we'll be allowed to keep the building rental income, correct? Or was it the custodial fee?
Correct, no, you're correct.
The building rental income. The building rental income.
Building rental income-
I presume that that agreement is still in place-
Yes.
And that we continue to collect the building rental in our budget. It doesn't go to the town.
Correct. Yes, we always collected the custodial billing.
Yeah.
We track that in the maintenance department, what's billable, what's non-billable. We used to give the rental fee. So, the way the reservation works is your, certain groups are charged a building use fee for either classroom, a gymnasium, even the parking lot use, and then there's a custodial fee. Because a custodian has to be there anytime anyone's in or outside the building. We used to give the rental fees to the town as income, and that was an agreement with Dr. Tito when he was here, probably three years ago, that we could keep that funding for our budget. You're correct.
Do you have other questions, Mrs. Gerber?
No, actually, all the questions I submitted were answered, so thank you to Dr. Jones.
Mr. Patton.
Chairman, Mr. Cullen, just a quick follow-up on the, on that that I had. Can we just get, it seems to be, I think you're on that track already, but an actual thus far for 2016, 2017 on that? Because that's the one column that we don't have, that we have in other places in the budget. So, that would obviously give us a, an idea if we're on track to stay on budget, or we have increases or decreases.
Yes, do you want to-
I think in the detail pages, they talk about estimated expenditures, but on these pages, they talk about projected for 2016, 17. If I can ask our Director of Finance whether it says "estimated expenditures" in the detail or "projected 2016, 17," it's the same information. Correct. So, the estimate for this year would be 120,000.
Okay, and actually, just checking, I have last year's budget book here. Right, so we projected 55,000, and we're on track for 52, based on what's in here.
Correct.
Asked and answered. May I continue with other?
Please. Again, pages 17 to 26.
All I have for, for Mr. Cullen, at least, right, just a second. Through the chair, to, not sure if it'd be Ms. Pincel or Ms. Leonardi, special education excess costs.
And the page number is?
Page number 17. I know we have the, the standard formulas to, to receive those funds, and the last time we received them was May, June, I assume. So, my basic question is, did we have any surprises in last May? I don't remember in terms of what we were expected to get versus what we actually got in terms of what Dr. Jones was saying about the pie, and the pie getting smaller or larger, and all that jazz.
Andrea Leonardi, Director of Special Education. No, nothing was surprising. We came in at the final, final, after audit. Because what happens is, we submit our final numbers to the state in March. Then in June, they're all audited, and then the town ECS is adjusted up or down based on our final estimate in March. Okay, so we get our last payment in March, and then the town side is adjusted up or down based on what our audited numbers are at the end, after the full school year and fiscal year is finished. No, there were no major surprises. We came in right at about 75 percent return, which is what we budgeted for last year, and so we budgeted that way again.
Okay. And, you know, I guess the standard question that everybody's asking, you probably have no answer, because we can't predict what the state or the governor's going to do, but so far, we don't have really a next check-in until February, right?
March, we report again. We just did our December 1 filing, and we will file again March 1.
All right, okay, so according here, so we get payment for the December filing in February?
Correct. We get our first payment, yes.
So, according to the December filing, again, same so far, we're still good to go?
We've gotten no information from the state as to what everybody else filed. We know what we filed. Now, the question is, how many slices does the pie need to go into?
Got it.
And we won't know that until, that, until February or March.
Okay.
I wonder if you might expand your answer, at the risk of opening Pandora's Box. There's rumors, maybe. I'm not sure what they fall into about whether the governor is thinking of making other changes to excess cost sharing. Not necessarily to the budget amount or to the percentage, because that's based on how many people present, but relative to what share of outplacement tuition that they'll be funding. Am I listening to that?
That has nothing to do with this. That's a different-
No, not, not with this particular one, but, but is, is that an issue that we need to be aware of?
We received, the superintendent and I received a memo from the State Department of Education about a month ago now, where the Department of Developmental Services, DDS, who has, over the years, made some residential placements of young people with disabilities prior to age 21. They have made those residential placements. When a state agency of any kind makes a residential placement, the state picks up the residential costs, and we're still obligated to pay the educational costs of that placement. And DDS has made a number of those placements in, over the past two years, and there are currently six students whose parents reside in Fairfield, who were placed in residential treatment by DDS over the years, and have maintained those placements for many years. And we support their educational costs. The State Department, or DDS has determined that they will be, and are no longer going to be, funding those residential placements. And have, in fact, submitted letters to parents requiring them to take legal action against their school districts, for their school districts to pick up those residential costs. Could that impact us?
Again, clarifying, not for the educational side, which is always in our budget-
That's always our obligation, and we've been paying them.
But on the residential costs.
It's the residential costs of the placement, and the letters have gone out to families. The letters have come to us, saying basically, we've told parents that we'll continue to fund the residential placement only as long as they show us evidence that they have sought up to and including due process hearings against your local school district to maintain those residential placements. So, but that's separate from the excess cost provision.
Correct. But it is a forward-looking potential risk-
It is a potential risk, yes.
To all, all education departments throughout the school.
To all 169 school districts, to any school district for, where there is a student-
Yeah.
Who has been placed residentially by DDS, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And to follow up on that, on page 150, you have tuition for those six at 272. How much of that is tuition versus the portion that we're at risk of losing?
None of this represents any of the potential risk. I did not budget for the potential risk.
So, this isn't the total cost, the 272?
If, if we are, if we end up having to pay the residential costs of those students, those students will go into the excess cost provision.
Right.
If they're, if the decisions are made by March, they'll go into the excess cost provision. And what will end up happening is, we will be putting in, if, if I can give it a, an example. So, if I have a student whose total program cost is $350,000 a year-
Mm-hmm.
Which is the kind of dollars we're talking about for these kids. And up to now, we've been paying $120,000 in educational costs for that child.
Okay.
We would then be required to spend the full 350, and everything over four and a half times our per pupil-
We go back into the-
Would be a part of the excess cost, and would be reimbursed at-
That's 75 percent.
Basically, 75 cents on the dollar.
Okay, so the 272 that I see here is purely the tuition, not the residential?
Correct.
Got it, okay. So, that's downside here. Thank you.
Let me ask, so that you, I, we can clarify. If all school districts that have this exposure submitted those excess costs that now are covered by DDS and would have to be into our excess cost, that would drive the total requests up, but the budget amount remains the same. So, while Andrea said that we would get our 75 percent, who knows what percentage it will drop to, because it's being added to a pie that has a limit.
Correct.
So, it is, it is a risk that we have no knowledge, we have no way to project what that might be, but I wanted to make sure the board understood that it'll be another gift from the governor.
And the dollar magnitude of those six for residential, total?
The intent, the total dollar magnitude-
Just for the residential aspects?
Without excess cost in it is close to a million dollars.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions on pages 17 to 26 from board members?
Well, before Ms. Leonardi leaves the chair there, just one quick question, I think I'm aware of. Is the 75 percent amount, is that actually in a state law, or that's just an estimate that we're given on an annual basis?
That's an estimate based on what the state legislature budgets for the total dollar figure for excess cost, and then it's-
For the full pie?
For the pie.
Right.
All right, the state legislature buys a pie, and they decide how big it is. 169 school districts vie for some of that pie.
Right.
That's the December 1 filing. So, we estimate on December 1, each student who we believe is going to exceed the four and a half times the per pupil expenditure threshold, each and every kid, we submit each and every student's individual total cost. That's how the pie is distributed.
And approximately, you've been here for a number of years, how long have we been at the roughly 75 percent reimbursement?
For my first, I want to say, 13 years, the excess cost provision was budgeted at 100 percent reimbursement after four and a half times the per pupil expenditure.
And we received it, okay.
And we received 100 percent. For every dollar we spent over four and a half times, we got a dollar for dollar back and covered that cost. And then, one year, in order to make the budget balance, the state legislator, legislature put a statutory cap on that dollar figure, and from that point on, we have received less and less and less. So, as special ed costs rise, more students qualify across the state, but the cap on that dollar figure has remained. And so, the pie is the same size, and more people want a piece.
But it's been in the 70s, give or take, for the last five or six years.
It's been between 75 and 80 percent every year for the last couple of years, yes.
Okay. Other-
All right.
Questions on pages-
Excellent explanation, thank you.
Pages 17 to 26. Let me, anybody else on this side? If not, Mrs. Loomacormick.
Did Ms. Cannelli have a question? No, okay. So, my last question, related specifically to that, is to understand fully the cost of these non, of these unfunded state mandates that the state keeps throwing on us, additional costs. But on the other side of it, I'd also like to understand what the itemized and aggregate is for non-mandated extra programs that our district runs. And for example, we do the Open Choice Program. We're not required to do it, we do that willingly. How much does it cost us? Understanding that there's staff, materials, operations, transport, and we also get revenue. So, kind of understanding what the income statement is for running a program like Open Choice. Similarly, the pre-K program, another non-mandated extra program that we run, it's a benefit. Same type of concept. Can we see the income and cost statement for that? Along with the number of students that benefit from these programs. I don't know about Walter Fitzgerald, if that's a mandated program, or if that's a non-mandated program. I would imagine that that is just another kind of an amenity, a special program that we run, but it might be mandated. I don't, I don't know. I'll look to you to kind of look at the law around that. And then I know the gifted program also is non-mandated, right? So, how much do we actually spend on that? How many kids are benefiting from it? I think it would be interesting, and if there are other programs I've missed, to understand the difference between mandated unfunded programs that we have to pay for, and then additionally, how we're spending on non-mandated extra programs. And this goes beyond the core programs that we're running.
Yeah, that, that may require a level of research and analysis, especially when you start allocating staff time to fulfill a mandate or a non-mandate. So, so we'll see how much of that question can get responded to during this budget time.
Yeah, I mean, clearly, if there's a program that's insignificant, you know, we don't have to include everything. But those are kind of big ones that kind of stick out, those four big ones, and then-
And I might just clarify, I mean, when you think about preschool, it is mandated for our special needs children.
Oh.
And we have an obligation to also make sure that they are in an inclusive environment, which is the typical peer component.
Starting at pre-K?
In pre-K. I mean, that's, we have an obligation to do that. So, but I'll go through and see what I can do.
Yeah, check-
The same way with Walter Fitzgerald.
Right.
Those students that are there, we have an obligation, obviously, to educate those students.
Right.
It's a different style of programming, but not-
I just want to make sure, because I know within our mandate, we're, I think, what is it? Five years old and up kind of is our, or kindergarten and up is our core. But I could be wrong, and if it's, and if I'm, you know, I'd just like to understand what is mandated, what is not mandated, how much we're spending on non-mandated programs, how many people are benefiting from it. And then, again, as we mentioned before, the unfunded state mandates that we have. It's two different ways, that one, we're being forced to spend, right, which we, from the state, and they're not funding it. And the other way is that we are choosing to do it, even though we're not required to do it.
Mrs. Cannelli, I think, has a follow-up on that subject. Do you, do you mind if she-
Yeah, through the chair to Ms. Loomacormick. The scope of your question, to me, seems absolutely staggering. I mean, we have entire departments that are not state mandated. We have entire courses. We have entire extracurricular programs, where there is massive amounts in this budget book, which are not state mandated. So, I think some of the homework needs to come back on you, to look at these costs, and look at our priorities, and look at our mission statement, and look at our district improvement plan, to just toss off to our superintendent, please tell us what are the unfunded mandates that are self-imposed, and what are their budget implications? You're essentially raising the ghost of a question of doing an entire audit of the entire school district, which I think is a little bit more than the scope of what our superintendent should be directed to do. That is a massive question you've just asked.
I, I don't, I don't think so. I think we have that information in-house.
Hold on a second. It is a massive question.
Well, to the extent that it goes beyond those four programs, right? If it falls beyond those four programs, right, and I said, if it gets too granular, we don't have to go there. We're talking about, yeah, 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 no, I just cited them. I cited the four that I was most interested in. If we find that it's too difficult to go beyond that, then we don't have to, right? In terms of the excess cost and the unfunded state mandates, we should know that. In fact, I think they're listed in that section. They're like listed there. They're like listed one after the other. So, basically, putting a cost item on each of those, I think, is not unreasonable to ask. In fact, as a district, we should know the answers to these questions. It shouldn't be like some mystery, where we don't understand what these numbers are. We should, we should know them. The same thing, you know, we went to a meeting this morning with a legislative group, and it was interesting to hear other superintendents and other districts speaking, and they had numbers that they pulled out, and they knew them. And we don't know them for our own district, and I would like to know them. And I think it is, the more we learn every year, the better. And to the extent it's, it's too onerous, and there's a whole bunch of little pieces that need to be aggregated, we can skip little pieces. Only if something is significant, and I'll let you use your judgment if it's significant or not. But we should know this.
Part of my comment was related to Mrs. Maxon Cannelli's, but whether it's significant or not, also part of it is how much research for a forward-looking argument that people might want to make versus approving this budget within the next 30 days, 15 days. So, I, I may give her some, I think we ought to give the superintendent and her staff some flexibility in terms of how much work they can do between now and getting the budget approved.
Absolutely. The reason I think this is important is because it helps prioritize some of our spending. In the event we do come into, they all of a sudden kill the excess cost reimbursement, we have some huge number. You know, we need to understand where we have to spend money and where we want to spend money. And if we can't understand that clearly, then I think we have problems. This is kind of to preempt that. Let's think in advance, so we understand what we need to have, what we'd like to have, and prioritize what we'd like to have. There's, I think there's nothing wrong with that. It's kind of logical. And if, at the end of the day, we find that we don't have time to understand this, then that's fine. We can choose as a board not to understand this. We've done it for years, we can do it again.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's stay focused on the budget factual- Let's stay focused on the budget factual questions rather than offhanded comments about what this board does or does not do. Mrs. Gerber.
This might be helpful for Mrs. Lou McCormick. You might want to look in the budget on page one-eleven. That gives you all the information on Walter Fitzgerald, so that might be a good place to start. And also, I believe when we had the racial imbalance report, we did get a pretty detailed breakdown of the pre-K program at the preschools, at the elementary schools. And I believe you asked the same question a year ago, because I was looking through some of the information we got last year's budget. And so we do have that, so that would be a good start for you as well.
Other question, can I, can I, before we extend this whole meeting for a debate on that subject, I want to make sure other board members have a chance to ask questions.
My question stands because I don't have the numbers.
Correct. Other board members have questions on pages seventeen to twenty-six. Pages seventeen to twenty-six. Seventeen to twenty-six. Fire away.
On page, on page twenty-one, the, from the 2015-16 actual to the projected for this current year, which is again carried over till next year, the federal money has increased by a small amount. And I just wanted to know, was there any direct correlation to, did we apply for extra funds? I mean, there's, nothing here is grants in the IDA or the titles, one, two, three, but we do have eighty, eighty thousand, eighty-five thousand dollars increase from federal funds?
Yeah, I mean, if staff want to address.
The detail that is listed there, you see the dollar amounts that are by Carl Perkins or Title One, Two, Three, IDA Part B and IDA Part B preschool. You're looking for what caused those increases.
Correct.
So you might want to-
It's federal and so-
You might want to give an answer for one or two, but then get back with a full answer on all six funding sources, unless you know all the numbers.
I know the IDEA grant, both. Both of them are driven solely by student enrollment. So the December one child count for IDEA drives federal funding. So it's all based on an enrollment count. That includes both children who attend Fairfield residents, who attend the public schools, and children with disabilities who attend any of our private schools in Fairfield. Who are parentally placed in any of our private schools in Fairfield, whether they live here or not, they are part of our child count for federal funding. And that's what drives that dollar figure, solely on enrollment.
Period, okay. So that's basically it. So enrollment slightly went up, so we got corresponding funds.
Do you need the other line items or is that?
Nope, that's it. I just kind of wanted to know, was there some kind of factor that came in and that's-
Other questions on pages seventeen to twenty-six that you have? Mr. Patton? Okay. If nobody else has questions on that section of seventeen to twenty-six, we'll move on to section twenty-eight to forty-nine. Anybody have questions on sections twenty-eight to forty-nine? Knowing that forty-six questions have been asked and answered and the answers are in front of you and the answers will be on our website tomorrow, but other questions for clarification of what you asked or new questions that have come up since? Pages twenty-eight to forty-nine. Mr. Lou Allen?
Sure. So in, in, in looking through the numbers in the headcount, I think I've sorted out the question I asked Ms. Munsell back in December, which is the number of heads. And I think that the difference from the last quarterly report is that we were projected to increase by five or so, but we increased by sixteen or so. Is that a fair statement? In actuals.
Where are you looking at?
I'm just grabbing numbers from the various pages. I'm on page twenty-nine for reference, just looking at kind of the FTE count. So our actual fifteen, sixteen was fourteen-seventy-eight. We budgeted fourteen-eighty-three, but our actuals today, well, per this book, are fourteen-ninety-four, so sixteen point six more than we had in fifteen, sixteen. And then this proposed budget is going to be a reduction of six point five FTEs, which I believe if we go to the following page, page thirty-one, we see, those are primarily in the paraprofessional staff where we've got a decline of twelve point one. And a-
Yeah, I'm not with you.
Okay, sorry.
Right now, we're on page thirty-one.
Right.
Correct.
And the narratives that are there reflect the net increase or decrease-
Thirty-one.
Of FTEs of staff based on account numbers one oh one and three, one oh five, one eleven.
So group one, one thirteen.
Yeah.
So was it object one thirteen? Is that the object?
So one thirteen is the paraprofessional.
Correct. So we've got a net decrease of twelve point one. The macro numbers I was giving you, total staff, I pulled out of the back of the book and out of last year's book. And the rationale for, for the decrease of twelve point one in the paraprofessionals after we just added sixteen staff last year is what, I guess? We've got a slight increase in the FTEs from the certified staff. We've got three increase in SE trainers and one increase in part-time. But we've got negative twelve point one in line one thirteen paraprofessional.
Now, there is, there is a question that's addressed in the packet, twenty-four?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-three. Where we talk about why those are being reduced and where those are coming from.
I'm a slow reader, thank you. Was it? There's a lot in here where he's got it, so, let me see.
And basically, it's tied to where our student numbers like Mill Hill, Burr, at Fairfield Warren and Fairfield Ludlow, we are actually, there's two parapositions that are combining to have, for teaching. And that was at the request of the principals as well. And so there's shifts and changes according to what's happening inside each school site, if that helps.
Okay. And is it primarily, well, obviously the para is, the SE trainers as well, are the teaching staff of one point five, I guess, I should be able to find the answer back here somewhere. Is that all related to kind of the shift in the special ed from the paras to the professional?
Page one thirty-six.
One thirty-six, thank you. One thirty-six.
That shows the ins and outs of all of our staff.
Thank you.
So it's hard, hard to know if it's that one in particular, because there are eighteen of them. Thank you. But primarily, yeah. Okay. Cool. And then, could you please walk us through on page thirty, your note for one thirty-three staff replacement?
Page thirty? I'm sorry, say it for-
The staff replacement, one thirty-three, the note. So staff replacement's been budgeted with a negative four sixty to account for turnover.
Okay, let me just make sure that I'm-
Is that a question for our HR director?
Probably.
Whomever. Yeah, none, none of the rationale, how it fits to down below.
Yeah, you're asking about the retiree calculation and-
That, and then how does it flow into, into the table? So I can see staff replacement's been budgeted with a negative four sixty. Is that four sixty kind of net in that table down below? You're gonna have to open kind of a double, I think, because this is where the-
Yeah, hang on a second. So Ann Lefort, Director of Human Resources, what other page are you on? Mr. Lou Allen?
Thirty and thirty-one.
Oh, I've got it. So what are you looking at on thirty-one?
So, on, on thirty, we have staff replacement. Staff replacement's been budgeted with a negative four sixty to account for staff turnover, three fifty certified and one ten non-certified. So are those numbers, the three ten, sorry, the three fifty and the one ten, are they embedded somewhere in that table?
I can't tell you exactly what line item they're on, but yes, they are.
Okay, so, okay. In the past, we'd seen it kind of on, on an individual line item, right?
Yes.
Okay.
It should be there. Mrs. Munsell, do you know what line item? So while she's looking for that, we'll get the line item. Did you have a question on the retirees as well?
No, I mean, I read what you sent through. I actually liked the way you guys did this, it was excellent. I like kind of rolling it forward and being able to bring it into a more realistic-
We'll see how that works.
You will.
You like the math exercise?
I do.
But I'll say I'm not sure I like the result. If I can interject, this essentially means that our Board of Ed budget is budgeting to what we fully expect to get as retirees and what we fully, just based on the projections, think that we'll need in elementary school teachers. And almost invariably, we have found one or the other of them goes south on us. And this budget essentially has no margin for error, because we used to budget low on retirees to kind of cover the elementary school teachers. And this budget, we're not doing that. So there is a risk involved in budgeting that tightly.
Actually, I'll just maybe elaborate on something you just said. We didn't intentionally budget low, we budgeted based on historical data.
A different methodology.
Correct.
We'd always historically budgeted low on retirees so we could pick up the extra-
Yeah.
So now we're doing it with a scientific method or mathematical.
And there's a related question that was asked that is kind of answered on this, that is in front of you, that was also in front of you in addition to the, we are not budgeting for elementary school teachers for those sections that are within one or two of requiring a new section. We tried to do that last year, the town said no to that concept, but we ended up needing six out of the seven positions that were calculated. But this year, our budget does not include those, budgeting for those sections on the bubble. And this page that is in front of you with the colors at the very back of the second page, had we done that, I'll say the, what I consider the risk that we are, is how much of the eight positions that are quote, "on the bubble" that one or two more students will require a split, how many of those eight positions will come to reality? And therefore, we'll need to have more than the new calculation of retirees or some other budget reduction to cover the teachers there.
I will tell you, out of the eight sections that we thought would go up last year that were in the budget, six of them went up.
Yeah. So it is a risk. I just want the board to know that there is a higher level of risk in the way we're doing it now than last year.
And the reason I started with kind of the global numbers in terms of total staff was last year, we budgeted, we'd be going up at five point six positions, yet we added sixteen point six positions, so ten more than we budgeted. Yet, if we look at the total number of sections, there are actually four fewer of them. So we have more teachers in fewer sections. So I'm not sure that the whole, we didn't drop the sections logic, this is where we had the conversation back in December that I didn't understand. We've got three times as many new employees this year than we did last year. And we're saying it's because we have additional sections, yet we still have four less sections this year than we did last year.
Correct, but our, our projected number of sections was lower, based on enrollment projections.
Correct, but that's why, so I'm using actual head counts, not budgeted. Actual heads are up by sixteen.
The answer to your question on where's the three fifty and the one ten is on page seventy-two, and you'll see that right at the top of the page.
One ten, perfect, thank you. And the four sixty is probably right in that area too? For the four.
Yeah, the three fifty and the one ten.
Three fifty, yep.
Is within certified staff replacement and non-certified, because if you look at certified, the retiree count number is in there as well. Is it where? Proposed, the one million, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, very, very top of the page, far right, right below the green.
What line item number, sorry?
Sixty-four and then fifty-two, one ten.
Fifty-two, one ten.
Yep, all the way on the right.
Got it, on the left.
What's that?
Perfect, on the left, thank you.
Okay.
So can I interrupt for a moment? I probably should have shown more graciousness to a certain staff member who ended up at the item three D, and I probably should have said, why don't we cover the transportation so that Mr. Fickie can move on about his daily life? So if I can interrupt pages twenty-eight to forty-
I had a follow-up to-
Twenty-eight to forty-nine at the moment, so that we could get Mr. Fickie in. You have a follow-up for Ann, a quick follow-up, right?
Yes, on the same exact thing. So you want to do that now or you want to wait?
If it's a quick follow-up, please do.
It doesn't, again, nothing ever has to be answered here, but I can throw this out there, so.
Page number?
I don't know, same thing, page thirty-
Thirty, thirty-one?
Thirty, thirty-one and line one thirty-three staff replacement. So we've been using for as many years as I can think of, my time coming to these meetings, savings of roughly thirty-six thousand dollars per teacher for retiring.
Correct.
So with the, you know, approximately two percent-ish of salary and benefits increases, you know, every year contractually, except for the couple of years when we didn't have them, is that thirty-six thousand dollars per staff member in savings still accurate? Have we actually messed with that to see if that's actually true?
So it's not a real number per se, because we have some teachers who we hire at a greater number of years of experience-
Certainly.
And we have some that are hired at a lesser number. We could do some research on that and see.
Kind of an average, right.
That's, right.
So-
And when I, when I first joined the board, it was thirty-five.
So-
When I first joined the board, five, six years ago.
Okay. Okay, I'm just curious, is that, you know, rough number looked at on a, on an annual basis to see if we're, you know, putting the-
Right. I have all the confidence in Mrs. Munsell on that number.
We never talk about that particular number, it's always the amount of retirees or, or staff replacements or whatnot, not the actual, how much do we say?
Yeah, I think it doesn't fluctuate too much from that, so that's a safe number to use.
So far, we're still on that track, okay, thanks.
Thanks.
So if I can redirect your attention to any transportation questions that you might have, that Mr. Fickie may be able to respond to, that would be, I think, appreciated by one staff person who happens to be in the audience.
Can you give us the detailed summary page, please?
Thirty-nine.
Page thirty-nine? So did people have any questions on, generated from page thirty-nine, transportation? The answers might be in some detail later on in the book, but, but starting with page thirty-nine as the- I know there was a question that was asked that are contained in here, and what number was that? So number sixteen speaks to a transportation question that Mrs. Gerber asked. Any questions on transportation? And again, my deepest apologies for not getting you up here sooner. Mrs. Lou McCormick?
I can't help but ask you a question on this. So I'm just wondering what efforts we go through to try to find efficiencies every year.
Transportation supervisor. We're actually changing the software to a more advanced web-based system to try and help with that. In the budget, I have requested an extra bus due to two things. Some buses that are arriving to schools five minutes late, and part of it's due to the capacity on the buses. On the high school level, we have students counting around ninety to a bus that is seventy-one passengers and can possibly fit forty-eight on it. I know we've had, on two occasions, the bus show up and have sixty-two students waiting to get on it, where we had to send a second bus. So that is part of that new request to split that run. But as we split it, we will reduce the mileage and stuff on the original route and round them off a little better. The middle school is the concern, because we'll wait and see where these kids actually fall, where they're living, when school starts, which kind of kills us when they move in August, as we're pretty much done with the bus routes in August. And then come the end of the month, or September first, we have to shift bus runs. But we're constantly searching to shorten the routes. But we're constantly searching to shorten the routes. There's two board staff as well as a part-time for student staff. They're all raised in this area all their life, so they know, you know, what streets you can go on, where the traffic is, which in Fairfield seems to be the big problem. Getting from the houses to the schools, anywhere near the post road is treacherous in the morning, so, but we are constantly searching.
And do we ever do any type of kind of efficiency with the bus routes that the town runs for the private school transportation or anything like that? Are we permitted to do that?
We look at theirs as well, unfortunately. We've had some past agreements made by town bodies that we have to live with. There's some roads that we can't go on. There were some promises to schools as far as the number of buses and pickup times that were made. So, you know, it's kind of, on an elementary level, there was a promise of between 30 to 45 minutes that we try to keep at one of the elementary schools. Naturally, we try to do that with ours because ours are primarily students that are staying local to their school. If you pick up somebody on the other side of the parkway and try to get downtown, it's kind of hard to keep it at 30 minutes.
So in a year like this, if the budget in fact is going to be tight, would it not be possible to raise those, I don't know, agreements, those verbal agreements and review them for their efficiency? Because it is very clear, and I know I have personal experience, that there are some buses, and you know it.
Yeah.
That run completely empty. Full-size buses, stop after stop, every single day, no children get on. And so there has to be some reasonableness, and perhaps this is a good year because of, you know, what's going on with the budget situation, that we can open up those discussions again and look for new efficiencies. And I even know some parents there who just really out of, because they're busy doing other things, they don't choose to opt out, even though they don't use the buses at all. So is there a way to reverse it and have an opt-in? And have people choose to use the bus versus not and have planning based on that? Because sometimes it's just a matter of inertia that stops people from doing something or not doing something. So I'm going to open that to you to say, is that possible in a year like this?
We push the private schools every year in May before they close and go out for the summer, to put that either on their website or, I know we've got good results at Unkwa School, you know, and they do try and get the parents. I know there was a parent group at Fairfield Prep last year for one of the bus routes that took it upon themselves to, you know, they called a meeting with the first electman and we've sat down and they got their parents to call in and remove those stops because their stop times were an hour and 15, hour and 20 minutes. But you drive all over town and nobody gets on the bus and you see the results of it. You know, I've gone to Country Day and done bus evacuations and watched car after car come in and there are parents of the kids that are supposed to be on the bus. The bus pulls in, seven kids get off. You know, it's spent an hour driving around because in the morning, if they don't opt out, you have to go by their house. You don't have to stop, you know, they slow down, but you're still traveling that circle and the other 15 people beyond that stop are waiting outside for their, their bus. So you can't pull over on the side of the road with a busload of kids and sit and wait. So the drivers are basically bound to go stop to stop.
I understand. I just feel that there is something to be done here. And if the town bodies are serious about trying to save money, there's an obvious inefficiency that's going on right now in our transportation that we could take immediate advantage of if people were willing to sit down and take action and have real negotiations. Because I have to believe that these private schools and these parents who live in the locality don't want their taxes to go up for no reason, for really very little reason. So, you know, I'm going to raise this again as an issue that I can't necessarily handle, but you are definitely in a position to emphasize and bring up again with the other town bodies. Because I believe that there is an efficiency that the school buses, with public school buses and the private school buses and the transportation network could realize further efficiencies. And I think you see it as well.
We do have some. I did, I am looking towards one of the, one of the schools in the past, we had taken and paid parents because the numbers came out to the town's advantage to transport their kids because the, the payment was lower than what it cost for a bus.
Right.
So if you have four kids or less, then if it can be worked out, then we can go back to that route.
I think that's a great idea, yeah.
Any other questions on transportation that people want to ask Ms. Cornell?
I'm just in reading this, it looks like we are coming upon our five-year contract with this bus company?
Yes.
Where do we stand with that going forward?
I've spoken to the town purchasing agent, the new man. He's from Norwalk. He's done the school transportation stuff before. We actually followed their pattern on the special ed, where they just, they put 60 schools together and put it out to bid. So every time there was another student placed, you didn't have to say, hold on and, you know, hire somebody temporarily and go out to bid and turn it over. They actually give me a document that I can look it up and say, okay, we're going to this school, here's the contractor column. If they have equipment available, we can pick that up. So we already, we are starting to look into working out what the new RFP is going to be.
And when will that take effect?
The contract's good till the end of June in 18. So they pretty much need to award something by December, January at the latest to give opportunity, if it's a new contractor coming in, to purchase 150 new buses.
Okay, thank you.
And to clarify, the bus contract is negotiated by the town purchasing department, not the Board of Ed.
Right.
We have input on the RFP, RFQ, whatever you call it, but once, once there is agreement on that, then the process is handled by the purchasing director for the town. Other questions on transportation, Mr. Patton?
Just a quick follow-up. Did I hear you say that for certain private schools, certain routes are an hour to an hour and a half in length? Is that true?
Yes, Fairfield Prep is one of those schools where you have 52 students assigned to a bus and the bus shows up with four kids because there's only six buses to cover all of Fairfield to get the kids into Fairfield Prep.
So, so you've got 30 kids taking six buses, is the math that you're saying? And of course they're?
Well, no, you have 30 kids assigned to the bus. There's 100 and.
You said there was five buses and six kids are on a bus, so.
That's what's showing up.
Right. So.
I think there's 156 kids that are eligible for transportation.
No, that I understood. So if there's no opt-out, as you were discussing before, so these routes are very long and they're kind of going slow by every single house that they're supposed to, so I understand why. So, so the structured route for a particular bus, if hypothetically, every student was on it, is about an hour and a half?
Some, I wouldn't say they're all an hour and a half.
But they're.
But they're over an hour.
They're over an hour, yeah. Okay, and that's obviously, that sounds like a reason why many parents are opting to drive their kids because the kids want to sit in the bus for, for an hour.
Mr. Patton, I think Mr. Calabrese wants to follow up on his related question.
I'm just hoping for a couple of points of clarification with this one. For private schools, Fairfield Prep, Assumption, St. Thomas, all of that, those funds come out of the town side of the budget as opposed to the Board of Ed's side?
Right.
Correct, so we don't need to worry about that tonight. I do agree that there are definitely some efficiencies that can happen with those buses, obviously with those, those types of times. I mean, nobody wants to take the bus if it's going to be an hour and a half. And could you just remind me or, and the board, what the state law is as far as transportation goes for students?
Not just private schools, but all students.
Public schools specifically.
The, other than students considered by our policy as walkers, everyone else is a transporting student. So with the private school, the issue is anything that we do for the public schools, we have to do for the private schools. So they have to follow our walk zones, you know, at their level. Gets a little hard with St. Thomas because it's a middle school, elementary school, and there's a difference in the walk zone for those. But I believe we're using the elementary three-quarter mile rule for St. Thomas and Unkwa.
Okay, thank you.
And that rule might be adjusted if that means they have to cross the post road or anything or not?
The post road isn't, isn't listed. The exclusion is a body of water.
Okay, thank you.
If there's a, a stream running in that's dry in September, it's still a stream, so.
Thank you.
My question was.
Other, okay.
Yeah, my question was more, I was fully aware.
Yes.
The fact that Mr. Calabrese presented. I was just more kind of infatuated with the fact that we have routes that are, again, going through the same bus company, that are, you know, structured, that are under your purview, that are an hour plus just because of the way it has to, has to work.
We have a couple.
It's almost disappointing and nobody's fault that that's the reality of the situation, so.
We have a couple of public schools that tip that one-hour limit because of where they are. The other difference with Fairfield Prep is its timeframe that they've set. We can't do any other work with the bus other than Fairfield Prep. The drop-off is 8:20, so you can't do a high school run then go do, do a Fairfield Prep. You can't do an private elementary school and then go do prep. Part of it's because of the length, but it's also the number of buses.
Any other questions on transportation? Seeing none, again, my apologies for not asking you to come up first, that.
That's all right. It's still raining in Torrington, so.
Okay, thank you. Wonder if the board would allow me, although we might have some additional questions on pages 28 through 49, to allow the public who are here to comment? And then after the public comments, we'll go back to see what the board desires for the balance of the night. So on to public comment on the superintendent's recommended 2017-18 budget request. Any member of the public that wishes to come forward and make a comment on our proposed budget, feel free to come forward now, state your name and address. I see some nods heading, but I'm, some heads nodding, but I, I don't know that there's anybody coming forward, so if there's nobody coming forward, you'll have another chance at the second meeting, but I don't see anybody coming forwards. I do, okay. I assume that the director of the museum had a reason for coming here.
I love to come to these meetings. Hi, good evening, and thank you for this opportunity. I'm Mike Jaylee, Fairfield Museum Executive Director, and I'm here with my education director, Christine Jewell. We wanted to, I know that you're working through the budget document, and so we're leap forwarding a little bit to page 148, but while we are here tonight, we wanted to just say a few words in support of the district improvement plan, specific action 1-4, which is on page 148. A very small part of that textbook instruction materials and social studies part of this budget is something that we've been working with the Fairfield School Districts for about five years now, on a plan to really solidify what has been a very successful 40-year relationship between the Fairfield Museum, formerly the Fairfield Historical Society, and the Fairfield School Districts. Over that period of 40 years, since 1976, the Fairfield Museum has been providing consistently high-quality and most recently award-winning social studies and humanities programming for Fairfield School children. What this, what this social studies change does is a small, a small change to that very successful history of programming. And that really just ensures that this program is consistent across all the elementary schools that we serve. Hitherto now, we have every year worked with the PTAs and sometimes the principals in each of the elementary schools to try to arrange on an individual basis these programs. Almost all of them have been able to be a part of these social studies programs that we provide, but without the consistency of an assured experience, the partnership and the delivery of these programs has been spotty. And so I think working with Mike Cummings and the excellent curriculum folks at the Fairfield School District, this is an opportunity to really make this consistent and make this very successful over 40-year program available to all the schools in, in the district. This is something also that is very core to the Fairfield Museum's mission. This is something that we devote over $60,000 a year of our own budget toward providing for Fairfield School children. We, we serve all the fourth and sixth graders and we do it with great pride and with great skill, I think, and we'd love to continue to do that going forward, so. Do you want to add anything to that?
Thank you, go ahead.
Christine Jewell, I'm the Director of Education and Community Programs at the Fairfield Museum. And I just want to start by saying in November of 2016, NPR reported on a Stanford University study, and it says, "Students have a dismaying inability to take, to tell the difference between fake news and real news." These are middle school students and college students. That's because we're not teaching them how to evaluate information, look at multiple sources of information, really valuable critical thinking skills that are now in our new Connecticut Social Studies frameworks. And those are based on the National Council for Social Studies C3 frameworks, which are really encouraging 21st century skills, which means you're giving students history, which is messy and it's gray and it invites debate and civic dialogue. And these are all things we really need in our society, building these civic skills. So we've been developing a lot of really great resources for the teachers to use. And what's really important as well is the professional development aspect of this. And we've worked for years doing professional development. You were talking about outside providers. We've been providing professional development for many years. We've been, we've served 1,000 students over the past nine years. And I just spoke to a professor, sorry, teachers. I just spoke with a professor at Columbia University the other day and asking her about her resources to bring to this community. Because frankly, Fairfield is behind. Westport Public Schools has a great curriculum, New Canaan, I've worked with all these schools, so I'm really anxious to share these resources and now is the perfect time to do it. So I hope that you pass this proposal, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the board on the budget? Please state your name and address.
Suzanne Misco, 123 Rygate Road. I want to thank the superintendent. This book is concise, mathematical equations to see how calculations are done is something that a lot of people have been asking for. And so it's a real pleasure to see it. It's easy to footnote a lot of the information. There's two things that have always been of my biggest interest, and it's the benefit side of the school district. I don't recall if Aon did come to present. I know there probably is not a great reason for them as we've gone to the partnership, but based on the information and the percentages that they've offered in the table on the page, I think it would be beneficial to the public and the board to have Aon come and kind of go over what some of the recommendations are as they're in this book. The other piece that I would like to see is a request by the board to the CFO of The other piece that I would like to see is a request by the board to the CFO of the town, who provides the pension numbers. There have been times where I have sat and watched a board go back and forth over $20,000 here or there, whether it's for textbooks or secretaries or whatever. And then everyone signs off on the budget, and we go, and this budget sits in front of the Board of Selectmen, and everyone goes, "Oh, by the way, that pension number you just, it doesn't, that's not the right one. It's really $100,000 less." And that's money that you all didn't get a chance to utilize if you wanted to utilize it in another capacity. So I think it might be helpful to have Mr. Mayor, I mean, a 62% increase in a pension number is alarming. And if it is due to retirees, as Chairman Dwyer mentioned at the brown bag, I think that should be noted so that this is not, you know, something that you're all trying to figure out. I also think it would be helpful to appreciate the 401A. It's a new program. It only had a $49,000 budget item last year, and it's now $132,000. And it went effective August of 2017. So how that's going to grow and what the percentage thought process of how that's going to eventually implement, where you're now running two different pension plans. You know, I think the budget is very good. In fairness, on the transportation side, I know we all believe it's mandated, but I mean, in fairness, the poor city of Bridgeport isn't busing high school students. And if any school district needs to get those kids to school, it would be Bridgeport. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to come forward and address the board concerning the budget? Seeing nobody come forward, back to the board for continued discussion on pages 28 through 49. As the board knows, Aon did present to us in December, and there's a question asked about pension number 12 that's within this handout, and that may address some of the questions that the board members had. But we are bound by the town's pension board that sets the number, and they set the number in conjunction when they have to vote on it, which is later in the calendar year, the school year, than when we have to vote on it. Other questions from the board on pages 28 through 49? Mr. Llewellyn.
Time was perfect for the pension comments. So on page 32 and 33, and the public does not have the benefit of the answer to number on number 12 here. But effectively, I think what it's saying is the number of participants was, or the difference between budget 1516 and 1617 is 12. And then 1617 budget versus estimated, the difference is 72. And then 1617 budget versus 1718 proposed is 130, nope, is 117. So I guess the question is, we're 117 more in our proposed budget for next year than in our current budget? And that's based on, the 401A, let me see, I wrote this down here, let me see. This is based on the non, this is the non-teachers, right? This is the, non-certified, thank you. Right? So the whole non-certified population's 463. So if we, so we're looking at a 25% almost percent participation, and I thought it was only for the new hires. Does that mean we have turnover or I'm missing some? How's it working? Can you bridge those numbers for me? Because it is, I mean, it's a huge increase. Probably best for Mrs. Muncell to come up.
It's been a very difficult thing to estimate. On page 134, that's the schedule of when all the contracts have been settled. So this has been going on now, I think the first one might have been 2014, end of 2014. So as the contracts were settled, the provision in the contract was that any new hires would go into the 401A.
Correct.
Which means it's based on turnover. And that's very hard to, you know, estimate, to predict. One of those groups, so what we did is we took the past three years of turnovers in each bargaining unit, because it's different, and took an average over the three years and budgeted for them, for that amount for each bargaining unit. One of the biggest groups where we have a lot of turnover are Paris. So we had to budget for that.
So we've got 25% turnover per annum?
[inaudible]
Wow.
But it is the group of employees that we have the highest churning, yes.
Yeah, close to, that's shocking, okay. And then do they need to have a certain tenure before they participate, or they participate right off?
Right off the bat.
And is, okay. And is theirs is portable?
Yes.
And we match right off the bat, or do we match later on?
We match.
Wow. Sorry?
Up to 4%.
Five years? So if we've got a churn, we should be getting, there should be a reduction in here for that, Come on down.
Anne Leford, Director of HR. It doesn't, there, the match doesn't vest for five years.
Okay. So then it comes back to the district?
Yeah, so it.
Stays in the pool to reduce future payments?
It stays in the pool, and some of that is administrative fees. Dorian could probably give you more specifics on that.
So if we've got a 25% turnover, there's a pretty good chance that a lot of it's never going to vest. But we have to fund it, and then we'll have an excess, and that excess will reduce our funding? And is that?
There's not enough in there yet.
Not enough in there. Got it. Okay. And then we had talked, one of the footnotes here talks about we're getting, getting it from both sides in terms of the town pension and the 401A. Since the employees are grandfathered in the town, the district is funding both plans, the cost will be higher. Why is the cost higher if the absolute number is only increasing slightly?
Well, because we still have to fund for the people that are in the pension that are grandfather, grandfather for their eventual retirement. But we also have to immediately start funding 4% for any of the, you know, the new hires, the turnover.
And so historically, we would not have funded the pension for folks until they've been here for X number of years?
Let me try and answer it this way, and perhaps somebody could correct me, or we could get somebody from the pension board who could answer that question. At the town's request, we asked each of our unions to move from a defined benefit plan to a defined contribution plan. The town always established the amount of its contribution based on a calculation of when they thought people would retire and how well the market had done. And sometimes, I think for almost a decade, no money was put in because we were anticipating tremendous growth in the stock market, and then Mr. Madoff came along. And so in talking about this, there was great debate at the RTM as to whether this is, in the long term, beneficial to the town. And if I recall correctly, the discussion was, in the short term, 10 years, this may cost us more. But in the long term, after 10 years, we will start seeing savings from moving from a defined benefit plan to a defined, from a defined contribution plan, no, defined benefit plan to a defined contribution plan. But nobody was able to show projections that clearly guaranteed that. It was a estimation. And so we're at the moment in the first two or three, four years, three years? Our longest employee union is about three years.
Two.
Two. So we're in the very beginning of that 10-year period where we're transitioning, where in all likelihood, we'll have higher pension costs because we're running two plans, and with the hopes that 10 years and plus later, we'll achieve what people anticipated by making the switch.
But I'm only on one plan versus the other plan, so I don't get the double cost. You'd be paying a pension for me, or I'm able to do the 401A. So I'm not sure why we're saying it's a double, because it's going one way or the other.
Because for the longest time, we did not set aside enough money to cover the people in the town defined benefit plan.
I thought we had the recent years, though. I know, I know going back to Madoff days, but.
Correct. And we're talking about employees who may work for us 35, 40 years, and therefore, think of 20 years where we were not putting in enough money. In the last five or six years, we have been. And so you can't fix a 20, 25-year-old problem with five or six years of contributions.
Okay, so the fact that we're double paying doesn't have really anything to do with the fact that we're shifting to a 401A, it's we're trying to backfill the pension?
I think that's a fair statement.
Okay, because the book says, the book's trying to create a connection here.
I'm not positive, but that doesn't sound correct to me.
Which one doesn't sound correct?
Phil's explanation.
It's not correct to me.
He was correct up to a point, to the very end, I believe. I don't think it has anything to do with backfilling it. I do believe there is the double cost because you're running two plans at the same time. So you're paying people that are still in the pension.
Right.
And now you've picked up that additional cost of the people that you are now matching funds with for the 401A.
So what's the average pension contribution on a percent basis of salary?
It's an actuarial calculation. It's not just based on, it's based on many, many, many factors.
I get that, but this is an average that we put in, I would assume.
That I don't know.
Yeah. Because 4%, but we're not double paying any individual in.
Correct, we're not double paying for anybody.
Right, so I don't, okay, I don't understand, but that's fine.
But you may want to formulate a question that you send to us that we can forward to the town, because it's really the town that manages that and knows the details.
Okay. And then we've got a 7% rate increase that's budgeted based on the recommendation of Aon for the Plan Partnership 2?
Correct.
And that increase has historically always been 5%?
Correct.
And have they given us indication, Plan 2, or is that just Aon saying 7?
They're saying about the same, they, they're saying 5 to 7, so.
The Plan Partnership 2 is? And then we're putting another 3% on it?
No.
Did I see a 10% somewhere in here?
Well, you mean the money that we had to make up because last year they used a balance sheet?
So.
Count the 700 and 40?
It was our IBNR reserve?
Yes. Yeah.
No, it was the fact that this year's was underfunded.
Because of?
This year's budget was underfunded.
Yeah.
Because of the IBNR reserve was applied against the expense?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, so that's the gap between the 7 and the 10.
Right.
So if we budget the 7%, and it comes in at 5%, let's just say, Plan 2 stays with its historical rate, does that 2% stay within the BOE budget?
Yes.
As a surplus here in our budget? It's not like it goes over to the town side to the medical retention fund or any of that? No. Okay. Perfect, thank you.
Mr. Llewellyn, I think Mrs. Maxon Connolly wants to follow up on a similar point?
And again, new insurance plan, but just that, we always used to run into this with our budget, that as new information came out in the spring, therefore, it went to the other town bodies, and they adjusted our budget accordingly. So one, it's not like we ever usually kept that 2%. But I just wanted, is the process for this the same? That as the state plan, I mean, I don't know how unwieldy it is because it's so much larger. But is it likely that those numbers will change at the state plan, and thus this would possibly go lower or possibly go higher based on additional experience? How does it work?
Those, the state will set those rates in the spring. So if we get those numbers in a timely fashion, the budget could be adjusted by future town bodies or town bodies down the road.
And if we don't, then Mr. Llewellyn's question would be correct. If we continue to talk about this and Mr. Mayor is watching, he might keep his eye on it.
But there are insurance premiums that BOE budget pays.
Correct.
And the state sets it once and can't raise it during the course of the year.
Correct.
So we'll know shortly. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Hopefully, we'll know May 2nd.
Unless it goes up.
Other budget questions on pages 28 through 49? It is 10 o'clock, and does the board wish to retire at this point? Or do you have questions that you wish to ask on pages 28 through 49? What is the board's pleasure? Mr. Llewellyn?
I still have more, but I can defer. The next page, page 34. We talk about instructional services, we talk about homebound instruction for both special ed and non-special ed. One states hourly instruction, and the other states instruction. What's the difference between the two homebound instructions?
Andrea Leonardi, Director of Special Education. What you see here is, this is a place where we've tried to put a placeholder in for a potential liability. There is a state, a move at the legislature discussing students who are expelled from school and our obligations to provide them the same number of hours of instruction during their period of expulsion as they would get if they were attending school.
Right.
And so, given the fact that, while we don't have many students who are expelled, going from 10 hours a week of tutorial to a full 35-hour week in a, in a homebound tutorial situation or something similar would be, I think, a little too much to just swallow. And so I put a placeholder here. So the difference between the tutorial, which would be based on either for the kids with special needs, a PPT decision, or a 504 meeting decision, and then the kids who do not have disabilities, if they have a medical, if they're out for medical reasons, then the doctor works with us to determine. But if it's an expelled student and this legislation goes through, we would have to provide equivalent hours of instruction. So the, whatever we're providing at whatever level, we would have to provide those students in some alternative opportunity.
Like an online?
I'm not sure if the legislation is going to allow for online instruction that way.
So is there something between online and private tutor?
Well, there could be an outplacement. There could be, for example, I've had some very early conversations with our Regional Service Center, CES, to perhaps for the whole consortium of districts, develop a, a program for students who are expelled from school that would meet the legislation that we could buy from them for that period of expulsion.
They would go there?
Well, they, CES would have to figure out what they would do. It would have to, they'd have to figure it out. Likely, it wouldn't be that they would go to the same campus as students in CES programs. They might have to identify another campus. But those, I mean, the conversations are at stage one. But obviously, if we had to provide one-to-one instruction for the same number of hours as everyone else, with certified staff certified in their content, we would be talking about a big ticket.
Got it.
And so I put a little money in here just in case.
Okay. Perfect. Thanks for the clarification.
Shall I ask other board members, or are you?
No, please.
Okay. I want to, for those who have not asked, been recognized too often, I should say, Mrs. Gerber, I think you said that you're, you've gotten what you need answered at the moment? Mrs. Gerber?
This is page 31. I just had a question about the 2.5 clerical support, just what that was for.
2.5, where is she?
And I see Mr. Ebling left, so you must have known her.
And is that?
It's, I'm sorry, 129 part-time employment.
129.
Yeah.
And I wonder if I could ask the HR director, what page was that that?
Page 31.
No, no, but the detail of the ins and outs, is an answer found on that page?
So Anne Leford, Director of HR. There were two, there was a .5 position clerical. So Ann Leffert, Director of HR, there were two, there was a .5 position clerical added to each high school, and that was to provide support for all the clerical responsibilities around the counseling centers, students with IEPs, PPTs, to try and make sure our certified staff can spend their time working with kids, and don't have to worry about the paperwork as much as possible. So this was a small way that we're trying to help alleviate that crunch-up at the high school.
And I did see somewhere, I can't remember if it was in here or in this packet, the reductions that were made before the budget even came to us, and I, so I believe it looked like they had requested one, a full clerical for each, one for each?
Correct, one high school did, correct. No, no, only Ludlow High School made a 1.0 request.
Okay, so then they reduced that, so they both each have .5. Okay, thank you.
And so on page 136 is where we see the .5 for each of the two high schools. Anything else, Mrs. Gerber? Okay. Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli, are there any questions that you have? You've not been called on too often.
No, I'm gonna have to, I have found it too difficult to read all of these answers to my questions, figuring out which questions were mine, going back and listening to the conversation, so I'll just have to reserve that for a later follow-up. Thank you.
Mr. Calabrese, did you have any questions that were not asked yet?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
And Ms. Carnell? I'm going by the way and way, how many times people have been asked?
I agree with Mrs. Maxon.
Okay.
Chris Cross.
So, back to Mr. Llewellyn.
Perfect. Page 35, 303, pupil personal services. And then when we look at this one, we actually have to go back into the, to the back section, page 73.
And I believe question number 12 has a related question and answer on page 33. I don't know whether it's the same area that you're looking at, but...
No.
No, it's a different area.
So the question was consultation services. We have a budget of 869 right now, but we're estimating to be at $1,077, and then it dropped back down for next year, but a net change of 110 increase. What is that attributable to? Because it seems we're up higher than budget, and we're gonna be dropping back down for next year.
This is a place where we feed back excess cost reimbursement, so it's purposefully underfunded.
Got it.
So that's one piece of the puzzle. And then we do have more students. We've had a couple of very interesting students with low incidence disabilities, who we've required some additional support from experts in the field, who help us figure out how best to meet their very complex needs. And so we've had to, so those are a part and parcel of that.
And does that go hand-in-hand with the PT?
Yes.
I figured, when you were saying...
Yes.
Okay, so that attributes the 200 and some odd?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And it was Ms. Pitco's number 12 question, but on this sheet, it's question number 25.
Well, that's what I figured out.
Mrs. Gerber brought it to my attention.
Thank you. Okay. Where are we here? Other Services, 307, page 73.
Before you go away, Ms. Carnell wants to follow up. Mr. Llewellyn?
Please.
Oh, is that okay?
Of course.
I guess on page 34, I'm just trying to understand a little detail on 303, the increase of, just shy of 225,000. Is it more the severity, more the amount of pupils? Is there contracts that are affecting this?
All of the above. So you have a student with a very unique educational need, requiring a level of intensity of service. Sometimes it's a contracted hourly service, like physical therapy. Sometimes it's a consultative services that is invoiced by, by outside individuals. Sometimes it's a training package that includes consultation and train, like on-the-job embedded training, meetings with families, meetings with school teams and families.
So, I guess, thank you. It's so hard, because, you know, throughout the budget book, as well as it is to understand, there's still pieces in every pie. So it's hard to put it together. About how many students are covered under 303, approximately?
Well, I could make the argument that all special education students are covered under 303, both under IDEA and the students under 504, because each and every time we bring in a consultation, it may be directed toward a unique, one unique individual student, but we learn, and our capacity increases, so that the next student, who may present similarly, benefits from that. So I could make the argument that all students with disabilities benefit from line 303. Obviously, occupational therapy and physical therapy, the students who receive occupational therapy and physical therapy benefit. Not every student requires those services. So, I mean, I could break it down and tell you how many individuals receive service, but the consultation line, I think I would make the argument that everything we, as special educators, learn is then usable and generalizable when we come across another student who has a similar need. If that makes any sense.
No, it does. You always want to learn, and... Hopefully, somebody else benefits. Just one more question, continuing on. I think it was under, page 36, I guess, under, under 307, other services. I don't think the increase is that large, but it's still, in the budget, over $2 million. What does other services mean?
This is where you would, we would fund things like psychiatric evaluations, neuropsychological evaluations, feeding evaluations, complex assisted tech evaluations that we can't complete within district. It's where we would fund instructional, if we needed, if we had a child who, we had exhausted everything we knew how to do, and needed to bring in some expertise to tell us what our next steps might be, it might be that. So it is, it is, in fact, other services. It's all of those kinds of things that help us meet the needs of our complex kids.
Shall I go back to Mr. Llewellyn, or... Yeah, last question.
One driver, one piece that results in this, we do have a couple of students in the district who require private-duty nurses with them all day, every day, and on field trips, you know, and during extracurricular activities. So if you, if you're a student who requires that level of nursing care, that's, that's the kind of thing that this would cover.
Go on to this. Do we, I mean, I'm sure you do, is, do we have any sort of number of students that get these sort of services?
I, not off the top of my head, but I could. Most of these kids also capture funding in the excess cost provision, because they are that complex.
That's why I was, right, it moves around in the book.
This is another one of the budget lines that we tend to purposefully underfund, because we fund for a 75% reimbursement in excess cost. So, for example, a student who has a private-duty nurse with them, 182 days a year, that student is, their costs are going to exceed the four-and-a-half-time per pupil. You know, that's just, that's gonna happen. So, yes, I could tell you the number of students who receive services that are funded out of this account, I could.
If it's handy. Okay.
Yeah, I have to do some work, but I can do it.
Mr. Llewellyn, if I can go on to Mr. Patton, and then I'll come back to you. You're done. Mr. Patton, you had a last question for the night? A couple of last questions?
It was more of an impact question than... Mike, please. It was more of an impact question regarding, actually, enhancing something to the budget that is in these pages, that I'd like to give the staff as much time as possible and to maybe research this. I'm supposed to spring it on the next...
So do you want to ask it out loud now, or do you want to just send it through email?
That's my question is, do we want to, you know, do I want to wait till after Mr. Llewellyn is asking specific questions, or are we doing this now? I don't know how long we're going to.
Go ahead.
I guess the answer is, I'll do it now.
Thank you.
With a puzzled look on your face. So on page 41, we have item 321, which is professional development and curriculum writing. And I brought this up during the, I forget if it was the October or November meeting, where we were talking about things that we would like to see in the budget, but at the time, Dr. Jones was not with us yet, and I'm not, you know, how that passed through, through Dr. Tracy. So what I'd like to know, and I'd like the staff to do their best to research, is the impact of adding between one or two days of professional development that happened during the summertime, so we wouldn't have to impact the school schedule, because obviously, that's a much bigger ball of wax, that's related to improving instructional methods directly with teachers. I know we do that sort of thing with data teams all the time, but kind of like an ongoing throughout-the-year basis, but we always hear that there's never enough professional development, and not every teacher, you know, needs the same type of stuff, but every teacher can benefit by learning something new instructional-wise. So, and certainly, depending on the significance of the expense, I would, I'd like to know as much in advance, by maybe next Tuesday, so that I could try and find offsets, if that were indeed possible.
So we'll have the staff look at that. I'm gonna guess that during the school year, they're being paid, so we don't have to pay them to come to professional development during the summer. That may not be the case, which means that, that will add to the cost, just automatically forgetting the professional development costs related to leading the workshop.
Right, I understand. Much as students would love another day off during the year, I'm sure we probably can't.
Yeah, so we'll have the staff research that. Thank you. Is that it?
That's it.
Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli, and then Mr. Llewellyn.
Just for my own clarification, through the chair to Mr. Patton, are you talking about a day of summer professional development, which you are thinking to require all staff members to come in to learn to be better teachers, and you think they're gonna show up?
Um... Do you want to say about that?
I'm sorry, perhaps I, perhaps I should phrase it differently. I'm just...
As I'm talking to an English teacher?
As you're talking to, never mind. I just, no, I'm actually genuinely seeking clarification. Are you thinking a day of professional development for 1,000 teachers to come in to learn to be better teachers? Is that the idea?
I'm not necessarily looking for 1,000 teachers, but I'm looking for ways to increase or add a day of professional development for instructional methods for teachers that could benefit from that.
I think Mr. Patton has a concept that he's asked the staff to flesh out the impacts and unintended consequences of it.
And if it's way too, it sounds like, in your opinion, that that's not exactly something that's realistic, but...
How many days in your contract?
Anyways, Mr. Llewellyn, do you have any final questions?
I have one here, Sam.
Because I interrupted your time. Do you have any final questions that you wish to ask tonight?
Um, no, you know, I'll pass on that. I can do that next door.
Okay. Mrs. Lomacormick, do you have any final questions that you wish to ask tonight?
I have my other questions, I can follow up directly. Thank you.
Okay. So I think we've asked everybody. Mr. Llewellyn, you've...
It's a clarification, it's a yes, no. Sorry, page 45, line 429, maintenance repair. 47,500 is the increase. And if you go in the back, it looks like it's, has something to do with plumbing, but I just want to confirm that that is different from Dwight issue on page 156, which is the sewer pipe that's broken?
And Mr. Cullen, I presume that you helped formulate some of these answers, and does question number 18 speak to that? Because I think Ms. Pitco had asked that question.
Yes, Tom Cullen, Director of Operations.
And I'm not sure that this speaks to what Mr. Llewellyn is asking about, but it has plumbing in it, so it's gotta be related.
I was wondering. That's all. I think they're different, though.
No, the question was asked, I'm trying to find it for you.
Is that question number 18?
18.
Yes, it is, thank you.
So if you look in the book, if you look in the book on page 156, you've got the Dwight broken sewer at 45, but if you go into the detail of the 429, I think it's different? I'm just confirming.
Yeah, they're two different things. Page 156 is an actual project in the operating budget at the Dwight Elementary School. The 47-5 you see on page 45 is covering the extra costs we're spending for supplies in the plumbing and HVAC area due to two employees we've hired in the past three years. Now that we have two licensed HVAC technicians and two licensed plumbers, there's actually getting a lot more work done, so they need to get the materials and supplies.
So we don't need that new ACL ward?
Work.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, that was it, thank you.
And that brings to light that we do have two levels of maintenance work that is done here. We have a list of maintenance projects that are budgeted and outlined on pages 154 following. And then, of course, each school has a maintenance line in it for just ongoing maintenance and work. So we approach maintenance from that. And of course, we also have the non-reoccurring projects that are related to maintenance as well. Is that a reasonable description?
That's correct.
Mr. Cullen?
Correct.
Mr. Patton?
Can I just indulge the board for one final question while we have Mr. Cullen up here? Sure. On page 45 still, on 311 for utility services, so we've been installing solar panels on buildings for a bit now. Have we gotten any hard data? Really, this year, I know it seems like we're starting to see savings, where are we getting the predict, so my question is, are we getting the predicted savings from the various solar projects that have been on for at least a year that we thought?
I don't, we have a full year yet of data.
Yeah.
That's the issue. Ward and Ludlow High School were the first two to come online, but it hasn't been a full fiscal year. Then we'll roll on into Dwight and the other schools, but we should soon.
So certainly by the end of this year.
And we'll be able to share that with you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Chris, follow up on that.
Follow up on that, sure. Sorry, this is just, I didn't talk that much today. To Mr. Patton's point, I, because I was looking at last year's questions, and a similar question was asked last year, and I know one thing that Mr. Cullen had explained at that point, is that while we are already seeing savings, we also have to keep in mind that based on certain building projects, we've expanded space, which therefore is taking up more electricity. I just remember that as being that, that topic from last year. So while some savings are being realized, we're not gonna see those as numbers because of those expansions.
But I'm not looking for budget number savings, I'm looking at the actual savings that we thought on those projects that we would, we would gain. Are we actually attaining that, using that data? Are we actually, you know, better or worse than what we thought? So...
It may not drop to the bottom line, but you're interested in...
Correct.
The results of that particular project.
No, but we have contracts with those companies, and we do, we'll look at those annually with them.
Good point.
Okay, so we will endeavor to put in the same format that the Q and A document is in here, for those questions that people asked at the table with the answers. I suspect that we will miss some of the questions, and so if we do, board members should email to Dr. Jones, so that you could get your question in and get the answer there officially, and it's recorded in the, in the Q and A format. I would ask you to forward other questions to the staff by, I'm gonna say Thursday night, if you could, on the, related to pages 51 through the end of the book, so that, and again, send them to Dr. Jones, but copy the entire board, so that if somebody sees your questions first, they might say, okay, that ticks off these three questions, so I only got two left that I have to ask. So submit those, if you possibly can, by Thursday, to give the staff maximum time. Clearly, if you have questions that popped into your mind, or you didn't get to ask, or you needed clarification on the first 49 pages, feel free to send those in as well. But for next meeting, we will focus on questions related to pages 51 through 163. And you'll notice on the tentative agenda that was sent out to you, 3E, that it is at the Tuesday, January 24th meeting, that we ask board members that if they plan on making any recommend... any recommended changes, whether it's Mr. Patton's professional development concept, or, or any reductions to the budget, that you inform the Board, and therefore the staff, so they can do the research and get finite numbers, of saying, this is this idea, this is the impact on the budget, and whether it goes up or down. And so we'll allow time for that discussion to take place, and then again, a public comment. Any questions from the Board on our process at the moment? Mr. Llewellyn?
I have to have a question. Would it be possible to get whatever questions you have, kind of accomplished by the night before, answers out to us, so we can read it ahead of the meeting? And then if you've got whatever left over, no big deal? Would it be easier to kind of read some of the Q and A ahead of the meeting?
How about this, if you're here by the close of business on Thursday? By close of business on Monday?
Whatever gets done, I mean, no big deal. Just whatever's done, if you can afford it on, that lessons are reading.
Yeah, and I can say, I think, you know, to credit the senior staff, they pretty much did all of these questions today, this morning, because we did get most of them late, because it was a holiday, so to their credit, I think they're rock stars of turning this stuff around. So as long as we get the questions, we absolutely can get the answers, yeah.
So I think if they come in by Thursday night, there's a good chance that with Friday and Monday, you'll be able to get them by the close of business on, on Monday. Any other comments or questions on process? If not, a motion for adjournment. Whoops, whoops. Mrs. Gerber?
Someone sent me a text that CJ from Woods came in second on the CHOP championship tonight, so just wanted to share it out.
Okay, okay. And, and nobody received a text from Ms. Pitco saying, hey, I want to ask this question? Okay, well, if you're still watching, get well. A motion for adjournment. Mrs. Gerber, Mr. Patton seconded. All in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. It's, Mrs. Lumecormick, it's unanimous?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
I have a question for you.